Signing the website or logging in.
I'm sorry, email the chief. So I was thinking. I was. But um.
So yesterday I said. When I would get.
But I I heard.
This because we got two. What about two? It's single. You know, man, like, what are you doing? I know I'm not done. I don't get that shit, daddy. You know, I guess I have to. Oh, my God.
And I guess she.
I have five, like. Because she was like, well, I'll just take one thirty seven. I mean, I don't have to care.
You can't.
There you go. That's what I told her. I was like, I can't, my dear. I was like, there's some.
Yeah.
I like that. Yeah, okay. Right there. Play that. My four questions. What's good, thank you. Since he got. Everything blended.
Dr. Jack. Dr. Jack. Bear with me. It's gonna be different. I'll 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 do what I can.
I I understand.
I need a couple of reps.
I think I want to get to the phone. Because here on I do this, like, allow you to edit everything. I might change something. What's all right, anyway? It's more decision made.
I'm Australian. I have five thirty two. I'm in school for my start. I have three board members on the way. I have a party line of five minutes away. Thank you for saying so. Tell you what it is. And give us.
She did well today.
Thank you all.
We're going to.
All of the. So.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all and thank the audience here for and our staff members for being a little bit patient. We're a little bit behind schedule, but we'll. We're ready to start now. I sincerely hope everyone is feeling well. If you if you should ever need to know what decisions were made at our board meetings, feel free to reach out to Dr. Johnson and or any board member. Minutes of our meetings are posted on the website after they are approved during the following month. We encourage everyone to stay informed and the correct knowledge is power. I have this distinct honor tonight of introducing Pastor Arno Peterson. Pastor Peterson is currently serves as the newly appointed. I don't even think he started yet. Pastor of Stevens Amy Zion Church in Warsaw, North Carolina. With more than thirty years of combined experience in industry, education, and ministry, he is dedicated to serving others with integrity, humility, and faith. He spent twenty-two years with Smithfield Foods where he was honored to serve as the first personal caller in the role of serviceman. A milestone that continues to inspire his belief in hard work, perseverance, and opportunity for all. Following his time in industry, Pastor Peterson answered the call to education and has served twelve years as an agricultural educator. He is currently an agriculture teacher here at Sampson Middle School, where he takes great joy in helping students discover their potential and develop leadership through agricultural learning. A servant of the gospel for seventeen years, Pastor Peterson is committed to sharing God's word and uplifting his community through compassion, service, and faith. He is a two-time graduate of North Carolina A and T State University and is currently pursuing a doctoral degree in organizational leadership, continuing his lifelong pursuit of learning and personal growth. Pastor Peterson strives to live a life guided by purpose and grace, seeking always to serve, to teach, and to lead in a way that honors God. Please join me in welcoming Pastor Arno Peterson for our opening prayer tonight.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our wise and most eternal Savior. We thank you, God, once again, for this time and this privilege that we have assembled together. God, we thank you for all of our students and our board and our faculty and all of our staff. Now, God, we just ask that you would continue to allow your anointing to rain down on us. Lead us, guide us, and protect us. Help us, God, that we might educate your children in the way that would be pleasing, meet just, and right in thy sight. This is thy servant's prayer, and Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Peterson, and good luck in your new new church. I welcome students and their parents, staff, community, all board members, those who are joining us in person and those who are joining us via livestream. We also welcome my newspaper representative. I saw Mr. Goodman somewhere. Uh, principal, students of the month, and their families. We have some grandparents here, some friends, and other people here joining us. And we have our county manager in our um attendance in attendance tonight with us. Uh, special thanks to Mr. Loaf for assisting with the technology. Today is Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and our officially called today's meeting of the Clinton City Schools Board of Education to order. Our theme this year is One Dark Horse, Premier Driven. Our vision is our destination, where we're going, and when we plan to get there. Our mission is our purpose, our goal while we exist. It inspires us to action. Our core values are what we believe. Our values drive us and motivate us to continue the course of action. Our goal is to live our theme, One Dark Horse, Premier Driven, to realize our vision and to and our mission and to fulfill our core values every day. Our deepest gratitude is extended to our frontline essential workers, those who care for us and protect us. As everyone knows, we cannot do this work alone. Your hard work, commitment, and dedication are recognized and appreciated. Our own police chief, Anthony Davis, has resigned his position from the Clinton PD and has chosen another life's path. I think today was his final day. Is that correct? On behalf of all our students, staff, and Board of Education, we say thank you very much to Chief Davis for all the support that you've given to our schools and the community. We wish you well. Assistant Chief Matthews has taken over the helm. We say welcome. Uh, and thank you to Assistant Chief Matthews. We know that we will be supported by Chief Matthews and his team. Our thoughts are also extended to our students, employees, and their families who are coping with sickness and the loss of loved ones. Please remember our city, county, state, national, and our international leaders and partners as we address all the challenges that we face today. I'll begin with the roll call. Please answer as I call your name. Board members and attorney. Uh, Mr. Jeremy Edgerton.
Present.
Pastor Russ Emanuel.
Present.
Mr. Clark Hales.
Present, Madam Chair.
Dr. Augusto Rodriguez is on the way. Ms. Carol Worley.
Present.
Attorney Williams is being replaced tonight by Attorney Amy Clay. Uh, Attorney Clay.
Present.
Thank you. She's joining us remotely. Congratulations are in order for Attorney Williams, who was married on October eleventh. Congratulations. Superintendent and staff, Dr. Wesley Johnson.
Present.
Dr. Lillena Carl. Ms. Emily Devine.
Present.
Mr. John Lo.
Present.
Ms. Sheila Peterson.
Present.
Dr. William Van the Third.
Present.
We're also joined by Ms. Nicole Hayes and Ms. Raquel Jones. And uh, they're both present. And also Mrs. Van will be um beginning work on Monday in uh Mrs. Nicole Hayes's place, so we'll welcome her as well. Good luck. Uh, Ms. Hayes has so graciously come back to help us during this transition. Uh, Ms. Raquel is also here to help us with this meeting. Many thanks to both of them for working with Dr. Johnson as the board and the board as we transition to a new board agenda platform. I hope you've gotten into diligent and a new board assistant. Flexibility, patience, and understanding are on full display in our district. We miss uh, we wish Ms. Hayes much success in her new cha- chapter. Uh, thank you very much for the many years of service that you give to the students, staff, and parents of Clinton City Schools. Please remember this. Once a dark horse, always a dark horse. Alrighty. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The next section of our board agenda is public comments. We have one gentleman who has signed up for this session, and that's Mr. Alan Van. He is the new county manager of uh, the County of Sampson. Mr. Van.
There's a little button there. Thank you, Madam Chair, fellow board members. Dr. Johnson, I appreciate the opportunity to uh be up here tonight to introduce myself officially to everyone. Uh, just want to let you know how important it is to me as county manager to build relationships. I know that is the only way this county will really prosper and move forward. We know we all have challenges. Every one of the various organizations, entities within local government, within education, we all have our challenges uh related to the budget. We all know that, uh, budget process and things like that. But we know there's also opportunities there. But we know we can prosper and do so much better when we all pull together as one. And I can't stress that enough to you, that that's my vision. It's certainly the vision of our board members. Um, and we we're just of like mind in that respect. Um, recently, we actually kicked off our first meeting of elected officials, and that was the vision of our board chair. And that was in respect, once again, to building those relationships, communication, to so that we can enhance that to help our county prosper. So um, and Dr. Brunson was there, and we we really appreciated that. And so, once again, that's what we're all aspiring for. And please know that if you ever need anything at all, any of you, please reach out to me and let me know, and I'm happy to help any way I can. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van, and again, I say welcome to Sampson County or welcome back home, I suppose. All right. Um, approval of board agenda is the next item on our agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to uh review review the agenda. If you did have difficulty getting in diligent, there is a hard copy of the board agenda at your um tables. So I ask for a motion to accept the agenda as it's written.
Madam Chair, I make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hales. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second made by Pastor Emanuel. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Approval of consent agenda. It's pretty short this time.
It is.
Uh, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Only three items, I think, this time. Um, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I made that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion made by the pastor.
Second.
Second. Mr. Hales. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Education Spotlight, I guess, is Dr. Carl.
It is.
Well, we have some great students to celebrate in October, and um we'll ask the parents and grandparents and the special um folks that came with you to stand while um your student is being recognized. And we're gonna start with Elsie Carr. This is Rexi Long, and she is going to go by and shake the hands of our board and our superintendent. Rexi comes to school each day. She has a big smile, a bright attitude, and she's ready to learn and try new things. Rexi's a great friend to others, and she always shows kindness, sharing, and helping her classmates. In the classroom, Rexi listens carefully. She works hard. She never gives up, even when something is challenging. And Elsie Carr would like Rexi to know that they are very proud of you and to keep being amazing.
And the neat thing about Rexi is that she was in the bathroom, in the restroom with one of her friends, had a little medical emergency. Rexi runs to the teacher, runs back, and while the teacher's trying to be frantic, Rexi didn't bother a bit. She just stayed right there, was as cool as a cucumber, and just held on to the little lady's hand. And it was just a great moment. I call her Gretchen because I didn't know her name at first. I could have called her Gretchen, but she's a great.
Rexi comes from a long line of educators, so it is in her genes. Next, we would like to recognize Kaitlyn Coe from Butler Avenue Elementary. Kaitlyn is dedicated. She's an enthusiastic student. She arrives every day eager to learn. She is a natural class leader. She always steps up to help others without hesitation. She has a positive attitude, and she has a consistent effort, making her a joy to have in the classroom. And representing Sunset, we have Miracle Assane. Miracle shows courage every day. She raises her hand to share her answers, even if she isn't sure they're gonna be correct. She bravely volunteers to read in front of the class, and she isn't afraid to ask questions when she needs help. We are very proud of Miracle for being Sunset October Student of the Month. And representing Sampson Middle School, Felton Stringfield the Third. He is also known as Trey and is a polite, well-mannered young man. He's consistently demonstrating kindness and positivity. He's an excellent student. He works diligently, asks thoughtful questions, and is readily volunteering in class. Trey exemplifies strong character and good citizenship. He is truly a pleasure to have as a student of Sampson Middle School. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations.
Is Ariel here? Okay, um, well, thank you, Mr. Green, um, for being here. And we'll send Ariel's um certificate to school. Ariel Robinson was the October Student of the Month for Clinton High. She continues to set the standard for what a cadet should look like inside and out of the classroom. She participates in class, asks questions. She's willing to lend a helping hand without being asked. So we celebrate Ariel Robinson.
All right, Dr. Johnson, employees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Always a pleasure to see our Students of the Month, and congratulations to I uh to them and also to their families. And we look forward to continuing to watch their growth here in Clinton City Schools. Now, we have the pleasure to recognize our October Employees of the Month. And we'll start in the same order. We'll go to LCK Elementary School, and it's Ms. Stephanie Gray. Uh, Ms. Gray is a kindergarten teacher at LCK who goes above and beyond to meet the needs of her students. She is always cheerful, kind, and willing to lend a hand to her coworkers at any time. Her passion for teaching is evident in her classroom environment. We're proud to name uh Ms. Stephanie Gray our LCK October Employee of the Month. Our next employee of the month is actually with us tonight, and we have Ms. Amanda Allen from Bu- Butler Avenue. Uh, Ms. Allen is a true example of teamwork. She is always willing to lend a hand and offer her support whenever needed. Ms. Allen is a dependable and knowledgeable resource whom teachers consistently turn to for guidance and advice. She is a shining example of what it means to be a dedicated educator and a true team player. Ms. Amanda Allen.
Congratulations.
Don't want to see you on the soft outfit. And we definitely appreciate Amanda being here tonight. Actually, Butler is having their Fall Festival tonight, so uh when you all leave here, please feel free to stop by Butler Avenue because they're trying to raise money uh for uh resources and things that our teachers can use in their classroom that we can benefit our students. How'd you like that shameless plug there, Dr. Harding Newkirk? Uh, Sunset Elementary School, our October Employee of the Month is Ms. Tina Hunron. Ms. Hunron is a true example of teamwork. She is always willing to lend a hand and offer her support whenever needed. Uh, Ms. Allen is a dependable and not, oh, I should say, Ms. Hunron is a dependable and knowledgeable resource whom teachers consistently turn to for guidance and advice. She is a shining example of what it means to be a dedicated educator and a true team player. Ms. Tina Hunron is our Sunset Avenue Employee of the Month for October. Moving forward to Sampson Middle School. And he is in attendance tonight with us as well. I don't know who's gonna present him his award since uh he's the principal, but Sampson Middle School, Dr. Tony Fason. A man of integrity who always puts his students and staff first with a heart to lead. Dr. Fason not only leads our school, but also shows compassion for his staff. Leaders can be trained, but compassion comes from the heart. We honor Dr. Tony Fason for the professional that he is in our school and community. And I know that Dr. Fason normally writes those, so you didn't write that.
Not the Tony Face.
Another shameless plug for our dime war. I have a daughter that's here in the sixth grade, so I had to clean out both of my cars and give it to her in a plastic bag so that she could bring it to school one day. So if you have dimes, bring it to. We take checks too. Moving right along before I get broke. We're going to go to Clinton High School and our Clinton High School October Employee of the Month is Mr. Todd Slater. Mr. Slater is an exceptional educator who provides invaluable support, takes learning math, engaging, and enjoyable. We are honored to recognize Mr. Slater and to celebrate him as our October Employee of the Month, Mr. Todd Slater.
What are they collecting at the hospital?
Any bugs for the high school?
Y'all collecting anything?
All of us that have had seniors, and I have another senior this year, we know that when you become a senior, just be prepared to give them like your right arm or your left arm because it gets very, very expensive. Central Service October Employee of the Month is Mr. George Kirby. Mr. George Kirby, yes. You see, everybody loves George. George is a dedicated and hard-working employee who consistently exceeds expectations. He approaches every task with a positive attitude and a smile every day, never complaining and always willing to assist others. George is highly motivated, a true team player, and an invaluable asset to Clinton City Schools. Let's celebrate Mr. George Kirby, October Central Service Employee of the Month. Those are our Employees of the Month for the month of October. Madam Chair, turn the meeting back over to you. Yes, yes.
One more group.
One more group. We do have a Principal Appreciation. I believe we have a little video that we're going to show for our October is Principal Appreciation Month. I believe my principals know how much I am thankful to have them. Last year, four of our five principals were like year one principals. And we've done a lot. We've grown a lot together. And of course, what do we call Papa Dirks? Is that what y'all call Principal Dirks? But it's good to see all of them here tonight, so we're going to celebrate them right now at this time. Yeah, so I was.
I don't, I don't see a video.
I was mistaken. It's not a video. But we are going to honor our principals and when your name is called, please come forward because I have a small gift for you. And so we're going to start again with the same order. We're going to start at LCK and we're going to recognize Mr. Greg Dirks. Jonathan, if you will, read their years of service when I call them.
Mr. Dirk, serving through education for 31-plus years.
Most of y'all know this, but not only has Principal Dirk served Clinton City Schools, Sampson County Schools, he's also served our nation for how many years? Thirty-eight years, and we continue to celebrate him for that as well. Next tonight, Dr. Angela Harding Newkirk.
Sixteen-plus years. One of my, one of my students.
Sixteen-plus years. This was one of our year one principals last year. Principal of the Year. Little bit about Dr. Harding Newkirk. So Dr. Harding Newkirk got married last year. She was a Principal One last year. She moved to Red Springs and she still drives to Clinton every single day. And Principal of the Year. Moving to Sunset, our principal is Dr. Nicole Carroll. Dr. Carroll.
Serving for 14-plus years.
Little bit about Dr. Carroll. Dr. Carroll, I believe, started in North Carolina in Cumberland County. She's been with Clinton City Schools and worked at Sunset, the middle school, the high school, and back to Sunset. We are very proud of Dr. Carroll. She also does not live in Clinton. She drives to us every day from Cumberland County. So Dr. Nicole Carroll, glad to have her a part of Clinton City Schools. Next up tonight, you've already met him, Sampson Middle School, Dr. Tony Fason.
Twenty-nine-plus years.
Little bit about Dr. Fason. So first time I met Dr. Fason was 99 or 2000. So we were both teachers together at Roseboro Salemburg Middle School. I kind of helped Dr. Fason think about administration as a career when we were both teachers. We both attended Campbell University together. And just a little known fact about Dr. Fason, he does not like his food to touch and he does not like Bojangles Chicken. Dr. Fason, Principal Sampson Middle School. Finally, our last principal tonight is Mr. John Green.
Serving for 16-plus years.
As Principal Green goes around, so we were looking for a high school principal a year before last and Dr. Carroll was involved in a program called Early Career Principals Academy through North Carolina Papa. And I said, "Dr. Carroll, do you have anyone that's in your group that you would recommend to be a high school principal?" Without hesitation, she said, "John Green." I said, "Get his number for me." So I'm on the way to a soccer game to watch my daughter play and I called Principal Green and we just have a fantastic conversation about Clinton and the things that are going on in Clinton. The rest is history. We got him in for an interview. He was named principal. Principal Green also lives in Cumberland County, but he's here all the time at all of our ballgames, big supporter of our kids. And a fact about Principal Green, he's fluent in both English and Spanish. So shout out to Principal Green. Thank you, sir. You want a picture? All right. Picture of all of, go ahead.
Keep doing that great work. We appreciate what you do, parents, to help support the children along the way. And our October Employees of the Month, I think they may have all gone by now, but again, we thank them for their hard work as well. So we're going to take a five-minute recess. If y'all want to get more pictures or whatever, you can. Once our principal finish posing. Thank you again.
Let's head it out.
I'm not ready to roll. I can have your attention. Well, go ahead and reconvene. I can have your attention. Well, go ahead and reconvene or we might be here till midnight. Midnight. Midnight.
Everybody get in their chair.
If I can have your attention, well, go ahead and reconvene. Next item on our agenda is Section 7, which is Curriculum Instruction, and Dr. Carr.
Thank you, Dr. Runtson. We have the Sampson Middle School School Improvement Team here to present their proposed school improvement plan to the board for review and hopefully approval. And Sampson Middle School has worked very hard. They've worked as a team to create some goals. They've expanded their goals and is striving to get out of low performance. So this is the plan to make that happen. And I will turn it over to Dr. Fason, Ms. Faircloth, and the team.
Good afternoon. I'm going to ask my sit team if you guys would just come up and stand with us and be with us. Normally, we had to present in December, but we happened to present in October, so we had to move and move quickly, which was not a hard, hard thing because we all worked together as a team. And the thing about, and you said, our theme this year is keep pushing. We didn't get where we wanted to be on state level, but we did on school level. So we're striving in the right, going in the right place. Don't they look good? So my thing is we have our president, well, we call it Chairman of the actual sit team is Ms. Halliwell Brown. You'll hear from her later. And then we have Ms. Courtney Bibo back here from, actually, that's our Avid Coordinator. And then we have everybody else that you see, and you're going to see four more in just a little bit. Okay? So we're going to try not to keep you long, but we're going to try to add to what we had last year and try to clarify some things for you guys. Okay? John, slide two. Our mission and vision, vision by 2026, Clinton City School would be the premier learning community in the southeast and proven to world one dark horse at a time. Our mission statement is our mission is to educate all students to their highest level academic performance, to support them socially, emotionally, and to prepare them for becoming productive and contributing members of a modern society. Next slide. This slide is one that I learned about thanks to Dr. Johnson. Whenever he signed me up to go to DLP, I'm just as mad with him as I can be. I need to take another thing. But anyway, I'm glad that I did. Okay? And 2000, the index score, index tells you which way you're going, left or right. So you're hoping to go left coming out of. So in 2022, 2023, we only moved three subgroups in the school, but we was a negative 6.8, which was not good. I said, "Okay, okay, that was my first-year principal. I said, 'We'll get better next year.'" And 2023, 24, we didn't move the two subgroups and we was a negative 7.7. I said, "Uh-oh." I said, "I knew I had to do something as a leader." And that's when Dr. Johnson asked me, or didn't ask me, he told me I was going to DLP. In DLP sitting there, and I'm glad that he did, I knew that I had to find a way out, get us out, try to walk out as much as we could. And I knew the answer, that was data. I needed to understand the data. I need to present to the staff the data for them to understand. So each session that I went to, we dug and we dug and we dug. Kim Bro, I know she got sick of me because anything, I didn't feel like, I said, "Hey, Kim Bro," or you Dr. Johnson, I see him, same thing. And so last year, to our surprise, we moved five subgroups. So we went from three, two, but we moved five. And we went to negative 4.4. So what that's telling, we're headed in the right direction. So that's why I say tonight, we're going to add to what we have because we stay whole-steady right there. We're in the right, going in the right direction. So look at next slide, John, please. And I've gotten a little old, so I can't read that that's there, but I got my copy here. And what I gave you was a scale from 2023, 2024 of reading. And you can see that first year, it was okay. But if you look at the yellow, which is the last year, we went up in both grade level except eighth grade. Eighth grade, I have. Eighth grade, I have reconstructed. I have moved some people around this and reorganizing and hope, I ain't gonna say hope, knowing that we are gonna go up. Um, and we put things in place. Now the teachers are probably get sick of me, but I know what we need to do to get out. That mean lesson planning? Um, I'm checking lesson planning. Every week I'm giving them feedback. Um, I gave some back this week and says, this is surface teaching. How could you dig deeper? I thought they were gonna get mad with them, but they didn't. They said, okay. So right here now, Ms. Shanoa Costa is gonna come and tell us about ELA, what we're adding to, to continue to come out of low performance.
Good evening, uh, counselor and board members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. Like Dr. Fason said, I am Shanoa Costa. I'm a seventh grade ELA teacher this year. Um, our goal is, right now we are at a forty-four point one percent grade proficiency as a school for reading. Our goal is a five percent increase. And so by the end of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year, we hope to be at a forty-nine point one percent um, or higher for proficiency for ELA. And you may ask me, well, how are you going to reach that goal? Uh, Dr. Lo, next slide. Thank you. Um, we have a few different, uh, strategies that we are utilizing within ELA that to reach that goal. First is, uh, the avid strategies. We use the Freyer model for vocabulary, doing more than just defining the term and showing the kids how to use the vocabulary. Quick write journals are a daily tool that we use to get the students to write as much as they read, as well as using their agenda for organization to write their assignments and classwork down. We have iReady, um, that we are utilizing through standards mastery. So after teaching the lesson, reviewing the lesson and going over the standards in the classroom, we assign iReady lessons, um, every other week or every week, depending on how fast we get through a standard. And they use that, that time during I and E to, uh, practice using the standards mastery through iReady. Um, we are also utilizing AR, which is accelerated reader for comprehension, not just reading a book for points and to reach a goal. Um, but to see, can we learn the book? Can we understand the book? What are we actually reading for comprehensive and informational text? We have HMH trainings, um, which is our current curriculum. And the trainings that we've had, we are able to see various resources that HMH has to offer. Um, so that we are expanding our learning as teachers, so that way we have extra resources within the classroom. And then we're also using EOG practice tests and our North Carolina check-ins. So that way students can get familiar with the wording and the language of how the questions are going to be asked on the EOG. So those are exit tickets and bell ringers as we go throughout the year versus just the end of the year. Um, are there any questions? Thank you.
And so that I know that they're teaching our children, I put children to the side and ask them, hey, what you learn today? And if I be in a class and they, I offer a concept, I'll say, hey, can you explain that concept to me? So I do that all the time, um, especially from last year to this year, our PLCs. Our PLCs we have twice a month. The first PLC belonged to us as administrators. And the second PLC, the third belonged to them. We sit in on the third one, just sitting in the back, just to make sure everything is going like it's supposed to. Our PLCs are geared around, uh, test specification. Uh, and that tells them exactly what standards are going to be tested on the integrated testing. Uh, when I use that, do their lesson plan, I'll look for that. I don't mind if they're teaching other standard, but it need to be mixed in. So we're gonna do that. So our next one is math. Um, again, math was our strong suit, uh, for this year. Um, seventh grade just rocked house. Seventh grade held us, held us together. All of them was good, but seventh grade held us together. Um, and you'll see here, there's over the three-year span, um, of the math. We're going right back, math for seventh grade was fifty point six, right by itself. Um, so we took a dip in eighth grade math. Um, but again, we're coming back. I know that we are. I'm not saying we're not, we're coming, we're coming back. So right here, Ms. Hannah Wise Brown is gonna go into, tell us exact, tell you exactly what we're gonna do to make sure we maintain and push up in math.
Good evening. So our second goal for our school improvement plan is that by two thousand and twenty-six, we will increase our overall grade level proficiency in mathematics to fifty-two point five percent. So this past year, the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it was measured at forty-seven point five percent. So we are planning to increase by five percent. Our twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six goal is fifty-two and a half percent. So how are we going to get there? So seeing that seventh grade was so strong, um, and now I'm a part of the seventh grade team, I can see why they're so strong because of their PLCs that they were already having that Dr. Fason has implemented schoolwide. And so that's on all of our action items is our bi-weekly data discussions and our data-driven PLCs. Um, our avid strategies, one for math is focused note-taking, and that's something that is being implemented in the classrooms. We have common assessments and planning. So our students are all taking the same assessment that are standards aligned and we can measure their growth and their proficiency. We have iReady professional development, which is our math curriculum. We have intentional intervention and enrichment groups based on their iReady diagnostics. We are doing project-based enrichments, which are STEM-based. So students are having, are being given projects during their I and E time for enrichments. And one that Ms. Guerrero spoke of, what was it called? I, I didn't write it down. What was the one they made? The taco truck. They had to design and create a taco truck and it was a math-based project. It was really cool. Ms. Sloan did that. So congratulations and thank you. Um, we have targeted small group instruction during this I and E time and during classroom. That is one of our school-wide goals is small, small group instruction. And as middle school teachers, it's hard to know even where to start with small group instruction. And so getting some PD on that and really focusing on the small groups this year is very important to us and to Dr. Fason. Differentiated instruction based on individual student data, which is on the right side, our data sources, based on our check-in data, our EOGs from last year, our diagnostic, and then your classroom grades and your observations of your students. You know what they need. Having data talks with students, it's important that students know where they are. If they do poorly on an exam, if they do poorly on an assessment, having that talk with them in the classroom, having that talk if they do poorly on an exit ticket and keeping them involved in their education and not just saying you failed this test, you gotta retake it. So having those talks with them. Targeted lesson planning, which we do a common planning, and then we also submit our lesson plans for immediate feedback from our administrators. Our resource math class for select students with disabilities is really, really helpful. They get that time with the special education teacher for math. Um, we do offer tutoring. Some teachers are already doing tutoring after school. Um, I know it's offered in the spring, but we're offering it now so we can go ahead and catch those kids who want the help and who really could use the help now and not wait until March or April. And then tier two and tier three vocabulary instruction. This is very, very pertinent in math because you're gonna see words like hyperbola and quadratics and kids don't know what those are. But then you've got your tier two vocabulary, which is analyze. Well, they see that in reading and math. What does it mean in reading to analyze? But what does it mean in math to analyze when you get to geometry and shapes and graphs? And so really hitting that vocabulary, having your word walls up, that's another expectation of our classroom features is to have word walls. And so hitting those tier two and three vocabulary words. So like Ms. Acosta said, they're not surprised when they see it on the EOG and they're asked to analyze and do all those things. And like I've already mentioned, all of our data sources, our end-of-grade testing, our diagnostics that they take three times a year, our MTSS data, check-in data, grades, classroom and common assessments, and then administration and just district walkthroughs and then observations. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Our next one is go through, which is gonna be science. We sort of kind of took a big hit here, um, because of the new science test. Um, our students and teacher was used to teaching vocabulary, but they didn't know they had to apply the vocabulary, didn't know how to apply the vocabulary. So that sort of kind of hit us real bad uh, for this, um, last year. But we got a plan in place to make sure that we conquer that. And Mr. Perry Gillespie gonna come up and share the things that we're putting in place to make sure that we move back up as we work.
Hey guys, how's everybody? Wrote some stuff down, so, um, I won't forget anything. Um, before I started, just wanna say I'm Perry Gillespie. Um, I want us to succeed, not only because I love Clinton City Schools, but I have three children. Are all products of Clinton City Schools. Um, I'm a big supporter of public schools. And I know that the eighth graders with this, with the staff that we have and with the administration that we have, that we're gonna be as successful as ever this upcoming year. Um, Dr. Mr. Lo, if you'll go back to the slide before. Okay, um, this, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we were at forty-one point two, um, percent. So we came together and decided that we will increase overall by five percent. Um, for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, we're hoping for, um, an increase to forty-six point two percent. Um, so now, now Mr. Lo, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about how we are going to meet those. Um, so I've wrote down six, um, groups and I just wanna talk a little bit about each one. Um, the first group is we're gonna focus on data-driven, um, instruction. So the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna conduct bi-weekly data drives to analyze, to analyze the students' performances um, and determine if they need support through either tier one, tier two, or, um, tier three interventions. Um, the next thing we're gonna do is with our bi-weekly PLCs, um, they're gonna be focused on data, which allow us to collaborate, identify instructional gaps and adjust the strategies where needed in real time. And I think that one thing that, um, Dr. Fason and Ms. White and Ms. Faircloth have pushed this year is that when we have our PLCs, that we stay on track, we talk about the data, we go through the data and we come out knowing more than we did when we first went in there. Um, and then we're gonna use common assessments between all three of our science teachers, uh, so we can monitor student progress, determine where they are missing and what is missing and what needs to be re-taught. For example, I may teach something, um, that Ms. Penn's class is not getting, and I can give her, um, some ideas that she can do to make the students increase in those numbers. Okay? Um, the second thing that we want to do is, um, have personalized and targeted instruction. Um, we're gonna, um, implement differentiated instruction, which we already do inside the classroom. We're gonna really focus on small group instruction. Um, Ms. White is, um, your guru when it comes to that. If you have any questions, you can always go with her and she's got some great ideas coming from the elementary school. And she always tells us, you know, small group instruction is just not for the lower level grades. And she's right. And it's so easy to pull small group, um, things into the classroom and to get the kids, um, where they're ready to learn with their peers, instead of just having one of us just stand up there and just, you're gonna learn this and, and drilling inside their heads. Um, and then we're gonna engage in targeted lesson planning, um, and hold our data talks with the students each week so we can sort of determine and talk to them. This is where you are now. This is where you could be if you did the following things. Um, for the third thing, we're gonna use aligned curriculum instructional consistency. Um, we're gonna use common lesson plans, so we're gonna plan together. Um, we actually did that last year in science. Um, we would come together as a group every week and we would plan for the following week. I liked it because if one of us was out, um, and we had a sub, learning could still go on because one of us would step into the other classroom to make sure that they would get some sort of lesson if we could at all times. Um, and we're gonna emphasize the vertical alignment to ensure science skills and concept building. Um, number four, instructional rigor and engagement. Again, we're gonna do like they said earlier with embedding avid strategies into our science classes to strengthen things like inquiry, organization and note-taking. And because science is should be hands-on, um, like for example, last year we would do a lab, um, per unit. Um, so we're gonna make sure that they will expand on that and to make science more fun and engagement and, um, show them that you can use it in real world. Um, again, number five is vocabulary development. We're prioritizing, like, um, Ms. Brown said, tier two and tier three vocabulary. And finally, um, we're gonna support number six, our multilingual learners. Um, Ms. Carreras gave us, um, a great idea using Flashlight three sixty, which is, um, a targeted program to support our multilingual learners with science vocabulary, um, helping them speak, listen and close language gaps that impact science achievements. Do you have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
And our last area is where we made most gain, or right much gain, I'll say the most, but right much gain, which is our student with disability. And we're gonna ask Mr. Eddie Keen to come and tell us what we're doing there to, to, to you on that.
So if you go back to twenty-three, twenty-four, students with disabilities were at eighteen point four percent grade level proficient. Uh, in our goal last year, we said we wanted to be at twenty-three percent. And we came out at twenty-two point six. Now I'm a math teacher. I rounded that up. We're at twenty-three. So I'm celebrating that a little bit. But a little bit different from the other goals that the school is doing, we are only pushing for a three percent increase with students with disabilities. And here's why. If a student with disabilities is historically, um, scoring grade level proficient in math and reading over two years, we're gonna work to exit that child and get them out of the EC program. Not that we don't like the child, but they, they have reached the point, they don't need us anymore. So then our data numbers automatically start dropping again. So one thing we look for is, um, instead of grade level proficiency, we look at, um, meeting or exceeding, um, predicted growth in EVOs. So let me share some interesting numbers. Last year in reading, students with disabilities, fifty-four percent of those students met or exceeded EVOs predicted growth. In math, students with disabilities, fifty-nine percent of those students met or exceeded, um, expected growth. Now, I'm not gonna pat myself on the back, the, we started a resource math class last year at Sampson Middle School for the first time in about seven or eight years. That class across all three grades was at fifty-nine percent meeting or exceeding, um, expected growth. Some things that we're doing to push this twenty-six percent or twenty-five point six percent that we're shooting for this year, all of our special education teachers who teach in the language program have now been trained. We had to shift from language live to language fourth edition because of some issues between North Carolina's privacy rules and what the company Voyager Sopris was willing to do. So we just changed programs entirely. We were unable to get training until August of this year. So we did push that program with limited knowledge last year. And I will have to say, we didn't see as much growth out of that program as we would have liked, but everyone now has been trained. This is the second year of our resource math class. Last year, we did a combination sixth, seventh grade and a standalone eighth grade. This year, we're doing all three grades standalone. Um, so we, we are digging, um, digging even deeper into that. Um, I was, uh, fortunate to be able to go take a foundations of math class, which was taught by DPI and have been able to bring those strategies back into the classroom, um, and you'll see them in every lesson. Another thing that we've done this year, and I am kind of reading some of these direct. Um, none of our special education teachers who are in the inclusion setting are split during a class period. There's been times in years past where we would have to have, um, two inclusion classes at the same time on the same grade level. And so that teacher would be halftime in this class and halftime in that class. We would still meet IEP goals, but a lot of times the teachers weren't there the whole class. So every teacher is dedicated to one class per block this year. Um, our inclusion teachers, as they are available, participate in planning with their, um, grade levels. So they're able to be a part of that as well. And then for our inclusion group, um, our I and E group is structured to allow the special education teachers to work directly with students on their IEP goals. Understand IEP goals don't always flow directly along with grade, with grade level. And so if you have a student who is three to four grade levels behind in a given subject, you may be teaching fourth grade skills to a seventh grade student. And that's just something that their IP shows that they need. Just like the other, um, goals here, we're doing monthly data dives. The kids in my math class get to sit right next to me, um, at least once a month and we look at where their grades are. We look at, um, what their predicted scores are this year and we talk about how we have to move to get there. Um, our, like I said, our inclusion teachers are scheduled based on need. We even have a formula that goes in to determine which, um, student with disability is gonna be in a full inclusion setting and which ones fall into that resource setting. And that number seems to be working for us very well. Again, just like others, data talks with students, we're having data talks with parents. Um, and sometimes those are hard talks when you have to look at a parent and say, hey, your child's five years below grade level. Here's what we need to do to move them forward. Um, but that's the direction we're going in. Just to say where we came from in twenty-three, twenty-four, we were at fifty-seven percent, um, meeting or exceeding student growth. So we did show growth there. Um, the one thing that, um, as a TSI school, I don't know if you understand, TSI is targeted support and improvement. And it occurs when one or more of your subgroups is underperforming for several years in a row. Some research that I've found, while we may not reach that point, we're getting above twenty-five percent grade level proficient. If we can get our students' growth index to a one point If we can get our students' growth index to a one point zero for three years in a row, that will get us out of this TSI designation. Currently, looking at the last four years, we have moved from an extreme low of a negative two point one one back in twenty two, twenty three, and that was the year that we spent half of the school year with two EC teachers, where we now have four. That was the year we had some major changes. We have, last, this past year, we were at a negative point four four in our growth index, and that is, you know, it's moved a long way from that negative two eleven. So we're moving in the right direction as well. Any questions? We need to be at a one. We need to be at a one, three years running, to get out of that TSI designation. Thank you.
Again, we are headed in the right direction, and I think with Mr. King, it's scheduling. That was the, his, his category, EC was the hardest thing that it scheduled this, this summer. We talked, I spent probably two weeks. Every time we thought we had one fix, something else came up. We go to Mr. King, something else came up. So we finally got them scheduled so each one of those, a resource teacher, be on a grade level. So that was the hardest thing for us, but I think scheduling helped a whole lot. Ms. Angelique is going to come and share with us a little bit about how Avid is going to drive us, continue to drive us to excel.
Thank you, Dr. Fason, thank you, Chair Lady and Board Members and Cabinet. And so I'm an avid coordinator at Sampson Middle School, and, and it's my sheer delight to serve in that role. And in our discussions today, our action steps show strategies and actions that really flow from the teacher to the student. And so you may have noticed that the Avid strategies that are part of the action plan, Avid is going to be the how to increase student agency, which is students taking care of their own learning and being responsible for their own learning. And so this is Sampson Middle School's third year of being an avid school. This is the first year we're moving school-wide, and so we've implemented two goals to help with student agency, and you may have heard some of those things that were mentioned in the other presentations. And so one thing that we have learned, or one thing that we have implemented, is focus note-taking. Focus note-taking has to do with repetition. And so we know that repetition is important, and if you go back to when your children were little and were watching Blue's Clues, that's why it was so successful, because it was the same episode five days in a row. And so with the focus note-taking, our students have an opportunity to revisit those notes ten times, they get ten repetitions on those same notes. And so the thing is, and that will only help them when it comes to test-taking, it will only help them when it comes to remembering and comprehension. And so we have implemented Cornell Notes, that's what we're using as our focus note-taking model. Also, we've implemented using agendas, and so we've taught them how to use agendas. So not only for writing down homework, but it also including reflections for the day. So, and just like you probably use an agenda whether on your phone or a handheld agenda, our students are being encouraged to write something in every single block every day for every class. So if it's not homework, then it's a reflection for that day, so when they open up the agenda for the next day, they at least have an idea of what they did the day before. Also, we have access to Avid Weekly. Avid Weekly is a collection of articles that covers a broad range of content. And these articles are not only rigorous, it teaches rigor, but it also teaches critical reading strategies. And these critical reading strategies will only help them when it comes to these texts that will be used on the end of grade tests and classrooms and things of that nature. So not only are we using these action steps for teachers to help our students, we're also using Avid for students to help themselves. Any questions?
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Johnson, Cabinet, at this time, we'll take any questions that you might have of us.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Dr. Fason. One, Mr. King alluded to it in his SWD area, but he talked about engaging parents, having those data talks with parents, but I didn't hear any of the other presenters talk about having those conversations with parents about where their students are and where they need to be and how you're going to get them there. Anybody want to address that?
I'll jump in there. I think Dr. Brunson, for me, it may be a little bit easier because of the requirement for that annual IEP meeting. So there's that natural contact that I have with parents anyway. I'll let the others speak to, to, to their way, but I mean, that's really a natural conduit for me, and most of the time, even as early as sixth grade, I'm already inviting the students to their IEP meetings because I think they need to be a part of that discussion as well to understand what an IEP is, how does this affect me? And I have to have the conversation with the student upfront. We're going to talk about some numbers that might not make you sound good, but that doesn't mean we don't like you, we're going to, we're going to work on everything to make this work. But that, so for me, that's just a natural flow.
And we also have Tyler One Night coming up with report card conferences. I do know that some of the teachers have already scheduled conferences with some parents, especially Shirley Williams and Wendy Dixon, they get them in the grocery store, they get them where they can get them at, and set, but a lot of teachers have already set conferences for the students and the parents.
In the IEP meetings too, there has to be a curriculum teacher in there as well, so we get to see the teachers there and, or the parents there, and we also have to keep a log for administration as well when we contact the parent through email, through phone, or if they come to visit or have a parent-teacher conference.
And it's also, like he said, it's also been, it's our expectation that we have that parent communication log, and if a student is failing, they, there's no reason, and this has come out of Dr. Fason's mouth numerous times, that a parent shouldn't have been contacted by that teacher. If a student's not up to par, it is the expectation of our administrator, and it's the expectation of us to make contact with that parent. And so whether they're succeeding or they're failing in your classroom, the expectation is you should be having that contact and giving your parents access to Infinite Campus so that they can see their grades at all times. So a lot of parents, teaching AIG especially, they don't like to see anything lower than a ninety. So if it goes in there and it's an eighty-eight, sometimes I might get an email, or if I put a ten instead of a one hundred, I might get an email. But a lot of parents use Infinite Campus to communicate, to see their grades and then communicate with us.
Or she might get a text on the weekend.
Some parents.
And also then our Tyler One Night, we go over that as well to the parents, I give them time to ask questions if they have questions. Sometimes they have questions, sometimes they won't, sometimes they'll come to me individually.
May I?
Yes.
I have one more question, Doc.
Go ahead.
All right. My other question is, your standard for improvement, I guess, is five percent, like in ELA, she said five percent, math she said five, science, parents said five, and then Ms. King said three. Will, will the five percent get us where we need to get to? Is, you know, is that just a kind of good number, or do we need six percent or seven percent? How do we know that five is where we need to get to?
And I told them that you would be the one to ask that question.
So you're talking about me?
No, no, no. We were doing a mock, we were doing a mock. Five percent is not enough. The state had, well, we went to one of the meetings, they said try not to go over five percent, stretching beyond. Anything that you get over five percent would become more of excessive. So we didn't want to slide too far out over five percent and then not reach it at all. So no five cent is, five percent is not going to get us out numerically, but we're on the right road, so I, I didn't want to reach out too far. So the ten, we just said ten percent and didn't, didn't make that, eh, that, well, no, ma'am. So no, we're going to succeed that more than a five percent hopefully, but I did, I want to be confident, safe, and not stretch us out there too far, if that makes sense. Okay.
If we're being safe, and maybe, and with the five percent, like, maybe it needs to be five point five for ELA, or, you know, six for math or whatever, but if you, if you're too confident, you stay in that zone, then you, you may not move where you want to get to. So I was thinking, is, because since everybody just said five, except Mr. King said three, I was just wondering if that's going to be enough? And if we know who the children are that are in that five percent that you need to move, because, like you mentioned, or someone mentioned, your eighth graders from last year ago, Mr. Green has them now, and you have new sixth graders from Sunset, so you have another population here that you didn't have last year, and your eighth graders is no longer here. So I'm just wondering, do we know who those individual children are, who, who would be in that, that five percent or whatever you need to do to improve?
Yes, ma'am, we took our BOY, and we have identified our yellow children, and the yellow are usually three to five points away from being our green, so we have identified those already.
Great work. I, I'm just going to start with great work. As an educator sitting on this chair, there's a few things that caught my attention. Dr. Fason, it's, it's great work what your team is doing. I understand where Dr. Brunson is coming from, and I, I respect her viewpoint. However, I also look at it in a data-driven decision. If you're moving in five percent, we got to be successful in that five percent. So then we can climb the next percent. And the other thing is, all of your folks said the same exact thing. Data-driven accountability, parents knowing, and Ms., Ms. Wise?
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown? You said it best, it's, it's the teacher's responsibility too to contact that parent, and that child needs to be accountable. Ms. Guerrero, multilingual, it's time. Mr. Costa doing EOGs, checking the questions. Mr. Gillespie, same thing, checking, doing labs weekly and calling parents, that's what it's going to take. That is what it's going to take, and I, and I just, I'm hearing this, and I'm just super excited to see how you folks and your team arrive to these conclusions and get to these goals. Because finally, we're reading with a purpose. We're doing math, and even with our students in special education, a three percent, and like you said, now we're teaching them math, that's, that's, that's what it's all about. It's, it's, we got to value each student as they are, and, and I'm just very excited to hear this information. I know mine is not a question, mine is more of a compliment. Because you're educating with a purpose and educating with a goal in mind, to get them prepared for the next level. So, so no, when you read a book and then you can analyze the book, you've read the book. And it's about time we got to reading the book. There are students in college that don't know how to read, don't know cursive, are struggling in math, but it's okay. And I, and I, and I think that what you folks are doing, it, it can lead the way to great things to prepare them to go to high school, and even Ms. Angelique with Avid, the agenda, we depend on our phones, come on, let's do an agenda, let's see what we got to do, let's reflect, that can either help with our mental health that so many issues we have today. When we can reflect about our day and understand, accept our responsibilities, it's phenomenal. I truly commend you folks with what you're doing. I'm, I'm excited to see where this is going to go, and I know it's going to go great because everybody's on the same accord, even with lesson plans, that's a big thing. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you, Dr. Brunson.
Doctor.
Thank you, other board members.
Madam Chair, can I, yeah, I'd like to, I don't know if you want to call it piggyback, I didn't realize Dr. Arias was going to compliment, but I would just want to speak some encouragement to you. I've sat here in this seat and heard this presentation for year after year after year, and something different about this one. I sensed the excitement in you, so if I sensed the excitement in you, that tells me there's success in the classroom, and I think that's what we all want to see. You know, sometimes it's hard to see progress in the process. The metrics are important, I think it's important for us to, to hit those marks, but I also realize that none of you want to, for Sampson Middle School, let's just address the elephant in the room for it to be a low-performing school. Nobody does, and you can tell that that is your passion when you presented tonight. I think sometimes culture, you, you got to do some small things to be able to get to some of the bigger things, and I can just tell the culture of your staff and what's taking place in the classroom is, and you label it very well, headed in the right direction because you can have all the vision, the vision is to be outside of that, out from under the black cloud. But if you don't have the culture, if you don't have the right people in the right places, you're not going to get there. And just, I mean, let's just be real, you know, culture eats vision for lunch. If you don't have the right, you can have all the vision, you can dream as much as you want to, and it be as big as you want to, elaborate, and, but if you don't have the tracks to get you there, so the train can only go as far as the tracks can take them. And if you don't have the right tracks in place, then the train is only going to do what? It's going to move at the speed of whatever the tracks are. So now that you've laid the tracks, I think you're headed definitely in the right direction. So I just want to encourage you, continue to do what you're doing and continue to, you know, make the steps that you need to make, and, and, and your staff should rally around that, and I, I just want to commend you for the directions you guys are headed in, and just say thank you because I know this is going to make a difference, and I, I do believe that, you know, the excitement that you have is going to carry on, and you're going to see the results, you're going to see the results that you want to see.
And Dr. Brunson, we did run several scenarios with some numbers, and it is extremely difficult to say for sure what number it would take. It does appear as it's going to be more towards the ten percent. However, growth, growth is a tremendous part, even though it's still only counting twenty percent, but it is, it's highly impactful in meeting the subgroups that Dr. Fason and, and his team mentioned. And so just pointing towards that, but I also understand that the team settled on the number that they settled because they want to see some success, they need to have some celebrations, you know, that it, that it does keep going, but they, they are working very hard, and I do believe that they are continuing to keep pushing, and they're listening to ideas, and they're asking for, we need this PD, and, and the team is, is really attentive when you provide it for them.
Thank you. Other board members, Carrie, Ethan, Clark, Mr. Right.
Yeah, yeah, I like the T-shirts too, that keep pushing, that shows some unity and some thought, and I wasn't asking questions to, to not congratulate them on what they're doing, I know they work hard, and if there's anything that any of us can do to help you, please let us know.
Okay, I'm going to say something.
Okay.
I was choosing not to because they had already praised, and that's what I was going to do, but I just, I've sat here a long time and I've listened year after year, and I am the numbers person because I'm the one that's, okay, I want to see these numbers, I want to see, but just like they said, the passion with what you're presenting here tonight, the process is not always comfortable, and what's going on behind the scenes, we're glad that you're sharing this with us so we can, we, we just get a little snippet of what's going on, but I can only imagine the, the, what's going on, the energy that's in the rooms when you guys are having this. Sometimes we, when, once we are knocked down, then we get to a point that we come back fighting, and that's what I, that's what I kind of sense here, like, okay, we've been in this place long enough, we know that there's greater in us, and we can, we can have better than what, what these numbers are representing. So this team, you came in here with a massive team in here tonight, that was, I love that, that, that was, it shows so many on its tab, that's the largest sit team that's ever That's the largest sit team that's ever been to a board meeting. Um, and I mean, and you got them all here. That was, that's an accomplishment. So because, yeah, but but that says a whole lot about the 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 culture as you guys spoke about. And that everybody is on one accord and they see the vision and they they got, you have their buy in. And everybody is is wanting to move from that place. It it seems like, you know, sometimes you have some haters in the building and somebody that's, I mean, Russ said, let's keep it real. Let's just put it out there. So sometimes you have those haters in the building and they don't want to see you succeed because of because of who you are or for whatever reason. I sense that you got a strong team with you and that the the people that you have are all on board. And it just, this was really, really uplifting for me to see tonight. So I I just thank you for all y'all had to say and and how you presented and and how you showed up with your with your shirts. That that's nice.
Is this on?
It was.
Okay. Ms. Welly, I just want to say, in addition to buy in, I prefer the word ownership. Because Dr. Faison gave us homework. He gave us data homework. And we came back and I wanted to commend the team, like you said. I was going to say, this isn't just us four that are talking about it. There are so many good things on these slides that came from all of these amazing people that we work with every day. And so we own this. Our team owns, that five percent is on us. We made that decision as a team. And so owning this and then taking it back to the people that we work with every day and watching it happen is going to be a celebration.
And this have been, Dr. Johnson first saw it and said, thank you. I'm mad at you when you made me go, but I'm glad that you did. Because I dug into the data and understood the data. I wish that I had known two years ago what I know now. Uh, but nevertheless, I know and I share with my um, actual team. Um, there have been so many Sundays when me and prayer partners have come out here and have walked the grounds and the classrooms and they have done good. Even with those that I call haters, that they don't think that I know that they're haters, I pray for them too. But again, I thank you, Dr. Johnson, board members, that anytime you guys want to come out and see, just come on. We welcome you with open arms. I thank you for your support that you've given us all through these these four years for me. And so we are determined to come out of low performance before I retire in June.
Dr. Faison?
Yes.
I want, I want to, you said prayer. Prayer is great. I believe in prayer. I think it changes things. But if you ain't got no participation, you can pray all you want to.
Well, that is true.
And I think you have the participation that you need now to move.
Yep.
The needle to where it needs to be moved to.
And that was part of our prayer and it have come.
Um, I I want a T shirt. I mean, and I'll pay for my.
We need dimes. I need dimes.
Well, I mean, I'll get you.
Don't.
I'll get you dimes.
Don't listen, board members, don't listen to them. I will get you all a T shirt, okay? I'm not even going to charge you a dime. I'm going to get you all a T shirt. But again, again, board members and Dr. Johnson, we thank you. We thank you guys for supporting us.
Happy return.
I'd be to see you, Karen. Don't don't listen here.
Uh, no, I think y'all did great. And thank you for your hard work. Um. This plan has to be in Raleigh in about a month, so we won't meet again in November. So we need um, I need a motion to approve the school improvement plan that they have presented.
I made that motion.
Uh oh, motion made by the pastor, second, Doc, who was that? Dr. Rodriguez, all in favor, let it be known by the word. I I thank you, motion carried. Um, if anyone has any additional questions or comments, get those to Dr. Faison or Dr. Carr before they submit this plan um, to Raleigh. Thank you, guys. Keep up the great work. All right. And yeah, we we're going to hold you to that T shirt, Dr. Faison. We're just just saying. Oh, yeah, y'all can go. Thank you again. All righty. Mr. Lo, you over there?
Yes, ma'am.
You were ready?
I'm ready.
All right, let's go.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. I do have a few information items. As you know, the Clean Classrooms for Carolina Kids program, we have our results now in the platform. Um, one of the things that we've learned is we have to list our interim measures. Some of those are going to be challenging. So for example, at Sampson Middle School, one of the places they found lead based paint was in all the lockers. We're trying to restrict access to those. We don't use them. They're all zip tied off. But trying to meet the program's requirements to restrict access to those is going to prove challenging. We're going to have to find a way to roll out some plastic over them and adhere it and we'll we'll figure it out, but we're working on it. I just wanted you to know there's some challenges there that we have to meet. We have a year before they will turn us over to the Health Department for additional inspections. So we do have some time and some of the full remediation efforts might occur during the holiday break or next summer. So I think we're going to be fine there. It's just, it's not as simple as it can be because you have to go and hire contractors who are certified lead removers, renovators. And that's just going to take some time to find someone in our area. But we're tackling it. I just wanted to let you know that it it does pose some particular challenges.
Can we just remove the lockers?
Yeah, that's our plan. That's their recommendation is just remove them. But when you remove them, behind it, we're going to have to prep and paint to make it look presentable. So it's not something you can just do over a weekend. And even the holiday break, maybe too short, because there's a lot of lockers in this building. And that's the prime thing here. Um, Elsie Carr, we have some of, and if you've been in classrooms in Elsie Carr, you've seen the old um, wooden yellow, they're yellow gold cabinets now. They were identified and their recommendation is to remove them. Well, that's fine and wonderful, but we're going to have to replace them with something. Teachers still need that storage space. So it's just going to take some time, but we're on it. And I just wanted to give you that information.
Is it all of them to senior hall, all the lockers?
All the lockers in this building. And a set that came out several years ago that Coach borrowed to put into the media room at the field house. They were identified and we're going to have to find him another storage unit to replace those. But that was, that was nice. That's easy. This building's much more challenging. Sunset, the biggest portion of the project is the windows on the gym. They're going to have to be replaced, which is not a bad step because that could be an initial step to shoring up the insulated properties of that building if we ever pursue putting air conditioning in it. I wouldn't want to air condition it till we replace the windows anyway. The good news is that this program will reimburse us two thirds. But the unsettling news is you don't know how long that reimbursement might take. And so we'd have to outlay the money upfront and then wait and submit our paperwork for the reimbursement to come. But I wanted to give you just some heads up on that so you'd be in the know. Project updates, um, we're still about two or three weeks out for all of our materials to come in to get the window portion of the project at Sunset wrapped up. Um, I told you at the last meeting, uh, five weeks or so, but they're running into challenges with material being delivered. But as soon as I get that information and we can get them on site, one of the other challenges there is they should have finished up long ago. Now they're going to have to do work after we release school because they have to go in the inside of those classrooms that face that side. And I'm not going to interrupt instruction. They're going to have to work around that.
This is still talking about the project where they uh, tried to come up with a um, alternative window replay. Oh, yeah. Okay.
And that was, I I just could not accept that poor workmanship and something that we need to last 20 to 30 years. I was not going to accept that workaround where they didn't follow our prescribed specifications. And just a few smaller project updates that just happened today. Um, the boys restroom on the end of the Finch Street building towards the gym, that's where the boys restroom is. One we had to modify years ago when we moved third grade into that space, so the height was appropriate for the young gentleman. Um, it did not because it was built years ago when they didn't do these things in men's restroom. It didn't have dividers between those urinals. But we just got them installed today. They've been asking for that for a while and they look great. They turned out and matched the dividers on the traditional stalls on the opposite side. So that was completed today. And the parking lot behind this building where we park for football games. Boy, it was getting hard to tell where to park. And we just got it lined and striped, cleaned and striped today. So it's a lot more visible and that's going to help with managing parking at football games and other events in the back of the building. And that's all I have for tonight. You have any questions for me?
Questions for Mr. Lo? If not, thank you, Mr. Lo, for what you do.
All righty, Dr. Van, you're up next.
Good evening, Madam Chair and other members of the board. Before I jump into my portion of the actual federal programs presentation, I too would like to commend Sampson Middle School. I think sometimes we plan and do so much that we forget all of the things that we have talked about and done. Dr. Faison has worked with me to use his federal dollars to be sure that they are targeting the students that they are supposed to target. When we were talking about data discussions, I was looking at him, wanting him to notice me because I was like, you actually use your Title I parent nights to communicate that to parents as well. One of the other things that his team mentioned was T S I. His school is a T S I school identified for E C students. He has worked with his E C teachers to spend his additional funds to be sure that he helped those students as well. So he is using his federal dollars as he is supposed to in an allowable way through our federal guidelines. And just wanted to highlight that as well. I wanted to share our federal programs information with you. Very important because of all the uncertainty we have surrounding our federal dollars and P R Cs. I was able to attend our federal programs conference last week. And the news does not sound very promising as far as some of our P R Cs are concerned. I do think we will continue to receive federal dollars. However, it might look differently in the upcoming years. We do have federal funds from Titles One through Six. We receive federal dollars for Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four and Title Six. Title One dollars are used to support schoolwide activities for disadvantaged kids. Long story short, any kid who is identified as coming from, I'm sorry. Okay. Got you. Any student who is identified as coming from a low income home through the C E P process or how we identify students for child nutrition, they qualify as low income students. And that's how we identify our federal dollars. In Title One, we have seen a reduction in our federal dollars. We did receive over a million last year. This year, we received nine hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. I do not know if these funds will continue to increase or decrease over the next couple of months or years. However, I think that is something that we need to pay attention to and keep our eye on. Title Two, focus on the effectiveness effectiveness of the profession. Making sure that teachers, any stakeholder, has access to professional development and other resources that are needed to enhance instruction within the classroom. Title Three deals with language acquisition and Title Four basically deals with the whole child. Making sure that we have technology within our schools, making sure that we have psychologists so forth and so on. That's what we use those funds for. And then we also have Title Six funds for our Indian education. It is very important that we continue to identify any student who is native so that we can continue to receive federal funds to help increase our Indian education budget. I also wanted to talk about fiscal responsibility and monitoring. Long story short, it is time for a monitoring visit. However, N C D P I has not announced to us when we will have our next federal programs visit. The last thing that we were told was to hold off on this semester. Next semester, they will start with the monitoring visits. However, a schedule has not been produced and I'm not quite sure if they're certain on how those visits will look in the future. However, that is something that we need to make sure that we continue to pay attention to. We want to be sure that we are in compliance when that visit does happen. We also employ a large number of employees with our federal dollars. Let me rephrase that. A large portion of our federal dollars are used to employ our people. We have reduced the amount of people through attrition that are paid through our federal funds. But if they continue to fluctuate or if they disappear altogether, we are going to have to find a way to continue to employ those people if we do not want to riff them. And we have not, to my knowledge, riffed any employee under this team's leadership in Clear City Schools. And I think we want to continue with that pattern. And again, we just want to be sure that we are in compliance, being sure that we are documenting how we are using our funds, making sure that those funds are used in an allowable manner and being transparent with how we spend our dollars. In other words, if we are questioned, we don't want to be ashamed to say aloud and in front of people how we have used our funds in the past. And just looking ahead, again, making sure that we continue to monitor our federal dollars, how they fluctuate, if we will receive them, looking at the employees that we actually pay out of our federal budgets, making sure that we are tactful in how we use those funds. So again, we can continue to employ the people that we need within our school district. And again, maintaining transparency, making sure that we are accountable for those dollars. And just have an open, open and honest conversations about how we are going to spend those funds or what we should do moving forward. What questions do you have for me?
Questions from the board? Any question? Have you, have, has your Tyler won? Have your Dollar One dollars been released? Do you have them?
They have not been released. I'm not quite sure when they will be released. With everything going on in the federal government as far as it being shut down, no. I do know that they have not had an opportunity to review budgets and applications. So I'm thinking that will happen sometimes in the near future. However, after attending our program meetings last week, I think they are giving the information as they are getting it. Or as I told one of my colleagues, I think we are building the plan again as we are flying it, trying to figure out how to navigate the course that we're on now. I do think, again, we are going to get some federal dollars. That could just be be me being a hopeless romantic or over positive. I do think it just will look differently how we are going to be held accountable and what those dollars may be allowed to be used for.
Have you received the Indian education grant money?
We have submitted everything that we needed to submit for our Indian Ed application. Yes, we have received acknowledgement that everything is done, everything is in order. I do not know if the funds have actually dropped down from the federal government level yet. But we have done everything that we needed to do at the school level and we have an approved application for our Indian Ed budget. They stopped sending us emails about two weeks ago. They will send an email multiple times a day until you actually submit it.
Other questions for Dr. Van?
If not, thank you for what you do. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that the money will drop soon.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Johnson?
My staff knows I like to stand up when I present uh, every cabinet meeting. I'm standing, just uh, I just do better standing, I think, uh, for me. So we're going to start with our uh, good news items uh, for uh, this uh, month. And we're going to slide into our review of shout outs, please, uh, Mr. Lo. Um, so this was an, this was one that I wasn't even aware of. Uh, and there was a lot happening on September seventeenth. Don't know if y'all remember that. Uh, but that was a board meeting night, it was also my birthday. But uh, C H S J R O T C did a fabulous job at the Constitution Day Clinton Courthouse. Uh, there was an article in the Sampson Independent. You can see several pictures from that. Of course, this has already been presented in our shout outs. Uh, we also want to shout out our bus drivers, our teachers, our administrators uh, for their leadership, their support and their assistance in uh, our recent, uh, that was the same week uh, that we were doing class acts. Uh, we're not going to ask John to pull that up, but if you do want to see and thank the individuals that are assisting and uh, supporting class acts, I did throw in uh, the sponsors there for you so you can thank. If anyone ever wonders why we call this gentleman smooth, all you have to do is look at this picture. Uh, this is one of the smoothest gentlemen on the entire planet. That's Mr. Anthony Peterson. This is one of the smoothest gentlemen on the entire planet. That's Mr. Anthony Peterson. Anthony Peterson is, was selected by UNC Worldview. He is one of twenty-five finalists from the East for the Worldview Cohort. Again, this has been publicized to all of us in our shout outs. So if you would like to read the information, it is there, but definitely, definitely smooth. We appreciate all your work. A, the Graves Memorial Presbyterian Church, that is not a misprint. They received a ten thousand dollar grant and they have been working with Sunset Avenue, doing lots of charitable donations and reading to our students. And we appreciate all of the congregation of Graves Memorial and we thank them for their hard work to receive that grant. We've had several recent Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage programs. That information there is for you at Butler Avenue. There's some great pictures in there, John's, there's a video and some things. But we definitely want to thank Aaron Travers for submitting a simple gifts grant and all the work that's going on there. We also want to thank Paula Barnes and Miss Flores, Mr. Flores, excuse me, for the Hispanic Heritage Program that we had at Clinton High School. Again, this information has been shared with everyone. And then we also want to shout out our Hispanic Heritage Student Council. Recently, they had the food truck celebration on October the third. You can see all the food trucks that took part. So again, we like to service our community that is servicing us. So you can see the groups that serviced us that night if you want to pay them a visit. And then you'll see some of these pictures in a few minutes. I'm not going to talk much about our symphony performance or our band day. Cause I also have that included in my good news. And then we had our first teacher spotlight for the, for this year, and it was Jessica Garner. John, if you click on that, just in case our faculty and staff have not seen Ms. Garner in a while. Ms. Garner is one of our kindergarten teachers at LCK. She is another one of our staff. We've, we've had so much success with staff members that were former instructional assistants that worked hard to get into the role of becoming a teacher. Ms. Garner was one of those staff members. So again, big shout out to Ms. Garner and all the work that's going on at LCK. And those were the review of the shout outs and all of that information has been previously shared. Some of these other information you may not have seen, you have, you should have seen the newsletter. So the newsletter again is all the good news from the previous board meeting. And so we put that in and we send that out to all of our constituents so they can see all the great and wonderful things that are going on here in Clinton City. Again, I mentioned a few moments ago that through the works of the Anonymous Trust and Simple Gifts, that they were able to again bring the North Carolina Symphony to Clinton. I was able to make the afternoon performance and it was not only Clinton City School students, but it was also Sampson County students that were treated to this performance. There were two different performances that day. And again, we thank all of our students for their support of the North Carolina Symphony and it was a great, great performance. You've got several pictures of there to look at. Also want to thank Mr. Tartt and his staff and also Mr. Green and his staff for the twenty-seventh CHS Band Day. We had, I believe it was ten schools that visited. The link to the program and the link to the scores and the winning schools is provided for you to peruse. Of course, we want to always thank our sponsors for the trophies. That you'll see all the trophies there. We give away some very nice trophies. And again, thank you to our sponsors that help with providing the funds to do that. You've got the performance there. Our band performance last week, was it last week or the one before, John, that was canceled?
This past Saturday.
This past Saturday. I believe we go to Topsail High School this Saturday. So again, and what I liked about this performance, John noted to us, if you can see it in the scores, that we were given marks and the marks were very, were very fair. And I believe John said that we would have finished second in this band performance. If, if we would have been eligible for a prize, we would have finished second behind Graves Creek. And so John talked about just the, the, the growth that he has noticed as a former band director. He's noticed a tremendous growth in this current band and we wish them all the best as they go forward to Topsail on Saturday. Congratulations to our newly crowned, I should say queen, I'll fix that. Our, our congratulations to our newly crowned homecoming king and queen. You've got Darren Travers there and you've got Miss Journey Powell and they were just crowned this past Friday. And so we wish them a long and a wonderful year as our homecoming queen and king and queen again, Darren Travers and Journey Powell. We want to say a special thank you to our friends at Sampson Partners, including Mr. Johnny Fridgen. They recently reached out to my cabinet staff to share that they are offering free clothing to our students who express the need. We shared that with our principals. So all they have to do is show up with a parent, administrator, or school representative. And Sampson Partners will allow them to get clothes and things that they need to come to school and have a successful school year. As always, we want to say thank you to our partners and our schools for their gifts to the United Way. We have been able to reach all of our goals in United Way at every single school and location in Clinton City Schools. And that money gets turned right back around through Cafe Grants. So thank our staff for their contributions to United Way. Shout out to Artworks. Recently, we had our Downtown Square Fair. And at Artworks, they had artwork that was displayed from both Clinton City Schools and Sampson County Schools. So we wanted to shout out artwork for displaying the works of our students during the square fair. Speaking of grants, and I'm sorry, John, you don't have access to that, but Dr. Newkirk shared with me that spreadsheet. I'll work on getting you access that details the grants that the Butler Avenue staff have received just since she's been principal. So since she's been principal, Butler Avenue for the last fifteen months has received grants totaling over fifty thousand dollars. So congratulations to the Butler Avenue staff. Their hard work. So principals, you need to have that conversation with your staff. If, if Butler Avenue can get fifty thousand dollars in grants, you can as well. Shout out to Dr. Nicole Carroll, Dr. Fason and Principal John Green, all sitting right here. They are participating in a year-long series through the Sand Hills Principal Learning Series. I'm getting to go to that with them because you have to have a district level staff member. And I wanted to do it just to see if the collaboration and the, you know, and the work that was going on was what we needed to be doing. I think it's been two days of great collaborative work. I've got some pictures on the next page, Mr. Lo. It's not a small group. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, there are many principals that are involved with this. DPI is a part of it. Then you've got some other pictures of our staff participating in this collaborative. We meet at UNC Pembroke. We've already met twice in person. We've got some meetings coming up that's going to be virtual. But our staff, our principals are learning a lot as we collaborate with other groups in the Sand Hills and continuing to.
Keep pushing.
Keep pushing. I love that T-shirt. Shout out to the Sampson Independent. They are working to create opportunities to highlight public education. I can tell you, I get to eat lunch every Monday with Sheri at Rotary and she loves to push and promote what's going on in our public education. They've given us the venue. Once a month, Dr. King and myself will be providing an article. It would be guest columnist. And so mine was recently published on Friday, September the twenty-fourth. I talked all about Avid and the work that we're doing here in Clinton City Schools through the Avid Program. So if you get a chance, if you have not seen it, I have the article for you here that was published. Thank you to Sheri and her team for continuing to highlight the great work that's going on in our public schools. And I just can't have kudos to the staff here and all the work that we're doing with Avid. Congratulations to the twenty-four, twenty-five student athletes, coaches, administrators, parents and all fans who helped us achieve the Southeastern Athletic II Wells Fargo Cup. This cup is provided to the high school who earns the most points and across all the sports in that individual conference. So we were the Wells Fargo Cup champion of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. There's a picture on that next page, John. So Brad received this the other day to represent Region Two. I believe that was September twenty-fourth or around that date. And Brad received another award that date, but I've already shared with him that we're not going to celebrate that tonight. Brad's going to be coming to our December board meeting and Dr. Jamie King, who is on the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Board of Directors for Region Two. He'll be here that night. He couldn't be here tonight, but he'll present Brad with the Charlie Adams Service Award, which is one of the most prestigious awards in North Carolina. And so Jamie will be here on December the eighth to present that award to Brad. And so we thank all of our athletes and our parents and our fans for pushing hard. Here's another one that we're going to celebrate, another student athlete. Congratulations to CHS Senior Football Standout. Jaden, we know him as Jay Bird Williams, who was one of eight North Carolina linebackers selected to represent our state. Eight in the state linebackers in the December twentieth Shrine Bowl. That's going to be played at Spartanburg High School. And so y'all know my, my daughter is at Presbyterian, which is only about mm, twenty-five, thirty miles from Spartanburg. If you've not been to Spartanburg recently, you need to. It's a beautiful place. And then we've got the article from high school overtime that will show you all of the athletes that were selected for that. And of course, we all want North Carolina to beat, to beat South Carolina, but you've got a great picture of Jay Bird that was published by the North Carolina High School Sports Group. And of course, we know we got a big game coming up, I believe tomorrow against East Duplin. So congratulations to Jay Bird as he made it to the Shrine Bowl, again, one of eight linebackers. That's my good news for tonight. We're going to move forward to some, I'll have to read that Holland family. Thank you. I do not have it with me. It's in another satchel of mine, but I'll read that next time. I do apologize for that, but I'll have that for you next time. Our enrollment numbers are looking great. John, if you pull up our enrollment numbers, they, they keep moving forward, moving up. And so we are up to two thousand nine hundred and ten K-12 students. When you add in our pre-K, we're at three thousand and sixty-two students. And so again, appreciate all the work that's going in with those students and we continue to keep pushing to have great results. Couple of things that I wanted to highlight, Mr. Lo, if you'll move down to number twelve. And I put this in your red packets. It is one of the things that we kind of got into a discussion last month was talking about school performance and looking at ways to find out districts that look like us. I kind of knew that this was in the works at that time, but it hadn't been published. But Carolina demography, and John's pulling up this article right now, Carolina demography. So we had talked about this in cabinet and it's been months ago. They, what they were trying to do was they were trying to develop a model that would put North Carolina and group all the districts that are similar. And they were using a model that had been put forth from Ohio. And Ohio had two different typologies or two regions in Ohio because most of the students are similar in Ohio. And so they wanted to use those same metrics to distinguish North Carolina into two typologies. That didn't work. So then they tried to use four typologies. That didn't work. They tried to use eight. That didn't work. So North Carolina has ten different regions and, and even within the regions, I'm skeptical of at least one or two of these counties that are city schools that look like us. So what you'll note is, and John's going to pull up Region Two, we're demography Region Two. And according to North Carolina and all the people at Carolina Demography, very, very well-known. These are the districts that look like us. The first thing that you will note, that I noted, is there are no other city school systems that look like us. So according to Carolina demography, we are the only school system that looks like Clinton City Schools. Districts that look like us and, and John, John, if you'll slide up a little bit. They are all the factors that they utilize to determine what demography region you fit in. What's your percent, percentage of, John, I can't read that, but inexperienced principals. You read them for me, John, if you don't mind.
Local. Local per pupil expenditure, average daily membership, population density, percent of economically disadvantaged, percent of minority students, percent of English learner students, percent of beginner, beginner teachers, percent of adults twenty-five plus with a, I can't, that one won't expand. I'm assuming with a, a degree and household median income.
Thank you. So they, 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 they looked at North Carolina. They came up with these ten demography regions. We're in Region Two. And so according to these experts, they, they, they linked all these school systems. Again, I was really surprised that we were the only city school system that fell, fell in this region. So what I asked Ms. Kimbrough to do, and then I expanded on this a little more last night because I wanted it to be presentable and that we could actually look at the data. And we can discuss it tonight or you can take it home and digest it a little more and we can come back in December and talk about it. My staff knows this is the first time they've seen this. My principals and my staff, they, they, they know that we talk about this all the time. So what you have again, and it's similar, John, if you'll pull up, let's see, pull up where it says accountability twenty-four, twenty-five. If you'll go to the tab that says, I believe it says Carolina demography. I changed the tab. Yeah, Carolina demography Region Two. All right. And so you have this in a spreadsheet format in front of you in the red, your red folder. So you have the state of North Carolina at the top of that spreadsheet. Then you have what I did last night. I didn't ask Cheryl to do this. I kind of did this on my own. And I had not used the Google Sheet formula, so I had to figure that out, but I got it figured out and the number is correct. So what you have is the, the second or the, it's in the third column or the third row. Carolina demography Region Two mean averages. So these are the mean averages of the twelve districts that fall into the demography Region Two. And then what I did was if, if whatever the mean average was, if it's colored orange, go back up, John, if you don't mind. If it's colored orange, Clinton City Schools is higher than the mean average of Region Two. So you will see a lot of orange. If you go from one side to the other, there's a lot of orange. But I still didn't think that told the story. So if you go to the very bottom of the chart, John, I added this last night as well. Clinton City Schools place in Region Two of the twelve districts. And there are several areas, this, this really paints the picture of what experts in North Carolina looking at the twelve regions say, excuse me, the ten regions and then these twelve school, school districts that look like us. This really paints the picture of how we're doing. The first thing that I want to point out is EL progress. We are number one in demography two. I believe we're number one east of I ninety-five. I believe we're in the top ten of North Carolina. So with EL progress, we are doing fantastic. So that's the first thing that I want to point out. Math course rigor, if you're doing what you're supposed to as a district and you're testing all your kids, you should not score lower than above ninety-five percent. So being tied for first, I'm great with that. And you'll see other districts that are not at ninety-five percent. We're not, we won't talk about that, but we're tied for first for math course rigor. The one that sort of pseudo, pseudo surprised me is math grades three, eight. We're number two. So in the Carolina demography region number two, our math grades three through eight GLP performance. We're number two, only behind Wilson County Schools. And Wilson County Schools is the one that I question about being in this demography region. Wilson County Schools is above the state in EOG, EOCs, reading grades three, eight, math grade three, eight. And their numbers just look different than the other groups in this area. I know them, I know the superintendent very well in Wilson County Schools. He was actually my, my, my dissertation methodologist, good friend of mine. And I don't think he would say Wilson County is like Clinton City Schools either, but anyway. But we are second in math grades three, eight. So then you're going to see a lot of areas. where we're about at the middle. So you've got all that, EOCs, EOGs, we're six, reading, we're six. We all, my team and I talked about how poorly we did in science. It was a new test. We're sixth, right in the middle. There are some concerning areas for me as superintendent. Graduation rate. Last. For graduation rate, a lot of it is about paperwork. When you get students in the ninth grade, as soon as that cohort enters, you have to watch those students all the way to they graduate four or five years later. That's why there's a four-year cohort, a five-year cohort. If you have students, if you have a large EL population, and those students are transient, I'm looking at behind us, I'm looking at Peru, Puerto Rico, Honduras. If those students move out of country, it's almost impossible to keep paperwork to know if they go back to school anywhere.
So they automatically go against you?
Absolutely. Automatically go against you.
How much of that do we have? How much do we see?
So when Cheryl Kimbrough became the Accountability Director, she had a lot of experience with this at Pender. And so all of our staff, all of our high school and our counselors, they keep notebooks of every kid that comes in, every kid that goes out. The problem is, when these kids leave and go out of country, we don't, it's almost impossible to follow them if they go back to school. Even if they enroll in Puerto Rico schools or Honduras schools, if we don't have the documentation, count against you.
Yeah, but how many?
Twenty percent?
I mean, is that the only reason we're dead last?
No, 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 absolutely not. So we have to continue to follow those students through those four years. You all know, I mean, we can continue, I mean, if we go, if we go look at Biology, English Two, Math One grades, Math Three, which we've all talked about how well we did in Math Three, we're still ninth in the region. So, you know, we are working to reculture our high school. We've talked about this many times, as a group, as a board, I've talked to you individually. And so our numbers look different at our elementary and our middle school than they do at our high school. We are moving forward. I keep pushing. I like that. You know, last year, we talked about Clinton City Schools in the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that we were the lowest performing high school in all of Sampson County. I shared that data with you. Principal Green shared it with the staff. This year, we moved up one place. So we're no longer sixth, we're fifth. So we're continuing to move forward and keep pushing, but we're working to reculture that school. Principal Green will have his school improvement team meeting in December. He'll talk about all the work that's going in with the walkthroughs and the PLCs, and you'll hear all that from him. But it's going to take a while to turn around where we've been at, at the high school. So that's one of the things. But I'm very concerned as the superintendent with our four-year and five-year cohort graduation rate.
We've talked about it a lot. You mentioned publicly in a board meeting on the phone with each other, but I want to say it from a board member's perspective, because it's the same opinion you share, and I think a lot of us share this, but there's been a lot of criticism from a lot of different areas about that high school, okay? Socially, whatever you want to say. There is zero reason Clinton High School should rank dead last in this county. That is unacceptable, period. And so I appreciate the efforts that you're doing to fix that. But I wanted to say that I'm only one of six, but that is absolutely unacceptable.
Completely agree. And you can look at our numbers, and that's why I included ranked order there, so you can see the things that we need to work on. Again, huge gain in Math Three. I think we went up twenty-three, twenty-four percentile points. Just think if we wouldn't have gone up twenty-three or twenty-four percentile points. Again, ninth, ninth out of twelve. So this paints a picture, I think, that anyone, Principal Green, Principal Fason, Principal Carroll, when you've got this information, and you can say, all right, where are we doing good? Well, we're doing really good in math. But they also know, because they know the data as good as I do, they also know that we have pockets in math that are doing exceptionally well, and that we have pockets in math that have areas for growth. So fifth and seventh, killing it in math. Fourth and sixth, area for growth. So think if we got fourth and sixth, where we got fifth and seventh, we'd easily be number one in the Region Two demography area. So I just thought that this painted a picture. This, of course, not done by me, well, some of it was done by me. But you've got experts at UNC Chapel Hill through the Carolina demography region telling you that these are the districts that look like you on all those factors. So my expectation to my principals is that you share this with your staff so that they know what areas we need to continue to work on and keep pushing. And I love that, I know I've said this three times, but they all know me, and they know that that's my mantra, we're going to keep pushing and keep moving forward. Because these numbers, and I love numbers like this, because if you show that you can do it in grade eight, grades three-eight math, then you look at all your reading teachers and you say, well, these are the same kids. And if we performed second in math, why can't we perform second in reading? And so just wanted to share that and share that with you all. You've got a color-coded copy there. You can see those districts that look like us. And again, when you look at the means, we're doing very well, according to the means. But I just thought putting in that rank order there at the bottom just helped tell the picture a little better.
Dr. Johnson, Dr. Johnson, I know Mr. Green is new, but would he share his insight? Because I will be in agreement with Mr. Hales. It's very concerning that we're dead last.
Not this year.
Not this year? What other changes do you perceive, Mr. Green, that need to happen to move us, to continue to move us forward? You're at the helm at the high school. What do you think?
Accountability, what the middle school brought out. One of the things that we just recently had a staff meeting yesterday, where we were looking at the school performance grade, where we're at, which included all of our subgroups, in addition to EVOs growth, understanding that. And because we're trying to push Avid and Wicker and thinking of how we're going to push students, I pushed the staff to ask themselves questions. What do you notice about this data? And what do you wonder? And when they notice, we see that we have huge gaps in where certain subgroups are. However, within that data, what we found out is a lot of wins. For example, I'm going to just use a particular number where a gap of one subgroup, previous testing year was negative four-point-nine-nine, went up to a negative two-point-three-six. If we hit negative two, we have met growth with that subgroup. The thing that hasn't happened is, obviously, it's going to be me pushing it, but common assessments, calling parents, analyzing data, knowing your kids, knowing their learning styles, these are the basic things, the building blocks to get the minimum of meeting growth. But when you can move from negative four-point-nine-nine to a negative two-point-three-five within the span of a year, you can exceed growth. But if they don't know that, they don't know that. So we were able to move, and I don't like moving from sixth to fifth, but I said, we're not going to be dead last. We have a goal to at least get to three, but I want to be two. However, like the middle school did and really buying into it, for me as a principal instructional leader, I have to put them in a position to be able to see the data, own it, and to come up with the solutions together. But I'm going to push common assessments. I'm going to push, when we are in PLCs, we're looking at evidence. So not just, I think this kid, no. What did the test score say they got? Where do we go from there? Because that's the questions we're missing. So I'm going to say that is really just a consistency and pushing those basic practices. Once we get those and the foundation's there, because they were, they were kind of there last year, and we jumped from sixth to fifth. And on top of that, improved our overall grade point, I'm sorry, grade level proficiency from a thirty-eight average to a forty-one average, the movement of three points, which, you know, you kind of look for that three to five, I want to see ten, but we're going to aim high so that we're seeing growth from that. But to answer your question, we're going to keep, that's what we're going to do. The basics count. Sometimes it's as simple as calling a parent and calling that kid and showing them this is what you can do, or this is where you're at. What are we going to do better? So that's in a nutshell, simplified way, but I'm going to get to more details. But yes, our staff meeting yesterday, we were digging into our school performance grade because we need to see why, what is the connection between our grade and the goals that we have chosen for this school year, and are we really doing it? No longer can we just have it on paper and say we're doing it. I'm going to know that we're doing it, and you guys will know that we're doing it as well.
Dr. Johnson, I'd like to make an observation about the four-year and five-year cohort graduation rate. In the past, several years ago, we had a person that was responsible for monitoring the dropouts, talking with kids and parents who were potential dropouts. They just focused on that. That was their job. They didn't have to do counseling or teaching or coaching or anything else. That's what that person, I don't know if there were one or two, I think it was just one, that's what the person focused on. But if we don't have anybody now that's dedicated or pinpointed to do that, that could be some data to suggest that's why our numbers are low. If we are depending on everybody, somebody, anybody to do that, that may be why you're not getting the results you need with that. You remember?
Yeah, like the dropout prevention coordinator.
That's exactly what it was.
Or something like that. Yeah, I do remember that.
Yep. And the numbers were higher then, because it was someone's job. It wasn't all of our jobs that do that. Well, I know we work as a team, but that was, that person had an office and had a job description and did a good job with that. So just for you to think about, that may be another. Now, it probably, they probably didn't find the kids that went to Puerto Rico or Honduras, but if they were on Sampson Street or College Street or wherever they were, they were likely to get a visit, a call, a bring back, or something. I think if they go to Community College, it doesn't, it counts for us, right? If they can track them at another institution, or if they went to Union or Hopeton or someplace. But if, I'm not sure, I think Ms. Hales asked how many kids are we talking about that may be going out of country? That, I don't know what those numbers are, but those that are around here can be at least contacted and try to see what was the reason why they dropped out of Clinton High School.
And so early interventions, like an early interventionist?
Yeah. And I'm trying to remember back, and I know you weren't here then, Doc, but when they, if, when he would go and get them, and if they would come back and they would get on the computer and they could do some of the catch-up work on the computer or something, they could still, like credit recovery kind of thing to help them. And then it would still help if they completed it within a certain timeframe. Seems like that's what I'm remembering about that.
Yep. And you talked about the middle college or something, Sampson Community College that you and Dr. King had talked about. Any way that we could get them back. And I don't know if the numbers or if most of your numbers are going out of country, but if they're local or nearby, or I know we can track them if they go to Hornet County or, I don't know, Lee County or wherever. But there are some probably walking the streets right here that if nobody has the responsibility or the accountability to go find them, ask them, provide them options, that's probably why your numbers are as low as they are.
I think, no, I appreciate that, those thoughts. I think it goes to something that Oscar kind of noted too. And my staff that have been with me for a long time, they know this, and they probably know what I'm fixing to say. When I took over as superintendent, retentions were out of control. Absolutely out of control. The most upset that I've been as a superintendent, I called my wife when I left the meeting. I had a conversation with one of my principals my first year, and they were getting ready to retain in kindergarten thirty-six kids. Thirty-six kids in kindergarten. That's two additional classes. So we have done a lot to diminish retentions that, not that, you know, you've got to be cautiously optimistic when dealing with young students, especially students that are coming in, because a student could come into kindergarten and they could not have had any formal training in school at all. And you're comparing to those kids that have been in a two-year preschool program, a three-year preschool program, a four-year preschool program. And we've also made a lot of inroads to work with our pre-K babies. We are pushing so many more concepts, like pre-K, like, I really wish y'all could come to see what we're doing in pre-K. I mean, we are teaching curriculum content in pre-K, preparing our kids, those early interventions that, you know, Dr. Rod talked about. That's what we're trying to do so that we're getting to curriculum younger and younger and younger. And by you're doing that, and by taking extra caution with your students, instead of just retaining and holding them back, there's a statistic, I don't know exactly what it is, John may know, we talk about this stuff all the time. I think if you retain a child once, they're seventy percent more likely to drop out of school. If you retain them twice, it gets into the ninety percentile that they are more than likely to drop out of school. Not that we're not going to retain kids that need to be retained, because it's always very difficult conversations. So we have a retention committee. So like if LCK, he invites teachers, when I say he, Greg, Greg invites teachers from Butler Avenue that come down, and they discuss every child that is going to be considered to be retained. And so that you're having those conversations about students early on, because, again, you've got to ensure that those students just didn't have, they didn't have the, you know, they didn't have the opportunity to have that formal training that they needed, and maybe that's why they're behind. Doesn't mean that they can't catch up. And I've shared this with you, I'm not going to go into the whole story, but even my own children that are in my household, the Johnson family, my oldest child had no formal training before she started kindergarten. She was speech delayed, she was labeled EC at five years old. She was my only child, and when she got to middle school and high school, she was in double AIG. She was AIG math and AIG reading. Did all of a sudden it just snap? No. She was intelligent as a kindergarten, she just didn't have any formal training. And so, again, we were new parents. So we learned with Emery, we learned with Inslee. By the time Inslee was in kindergarten, she had two-year preschool, three-year preschool, four-year preschool. So it's just a lot. And so that's a nod to preschool. And we've got opportunities for our kids to do preschool. Here, I think we have a hundred and seventeen slots, and then we have some additional slots that we utilize. So, again, starting kids early, starting these early interventions is how we're really going to change. But that's the long-range plan, because that takes twelve, thirteen years to change your cohort graduation rate. The biggest thing is being able to have documentation, keep up with it. When Clark shows up in ninth grade, we're following Clark, we're following everybody in here. And just knowing who they are, where they're going. Other day, we talked about PGC, Peer Group Connections. We used to run Peer Group Connections at Clinton High School. We no longer have PGC. These are some options and some things that you can do that Principal Green and myself are going to have to talk about. But the one, there's some areas on here that I'm very concerned about. The graduation rate is my number one area that we've got to improve here in Clinton City Schools.
Sorry. Would that position that y'all were talking about, would that, Wesley, is that worth more?
uh, position that y'all were talking about, would that, Wesley, is that worth more? Thought and consideration? I mean, it, do you remember what the difference in, I, I wouldn't mind seeing what the difference in the number, number was when we had that position? You got it.
Sure, I do.
Yeah.
Now, quick, quick question, Dr. J. Would, uh, changes at the guidance counselors at the high school and all, could there possibly have been some missing, like five oh four plans or something to where there's some kids that should have been extra this or extra that? And, and, and they just dropped the ball?
No, Charles, Cheryl Kimbrough again, uh, she's our accountability person. She understands accountability as good as anybody in the state. And she's keeping these notebooks, she's following up with our counselors, doing double checks. No, that number is legit. Uh, lowest in the, lowest in our dem- demographic, uh, in our demography region, and it's an area that we definitely need to improve on, uh, and something that we're gonna, uh, again, my people are seeing this for the first time. Uh, so it's so- something that we're gonna have to spend a lot of time.
I won't talk about graduation, I was talking about in general. Is there, is there a, a, a lack of, was there a lack of filling out some forms for kids to take tests or, or have some stuff at the high school? Where we had a little
No, sir.
swirling with the guidance.
No, sir.
Okay.
Nope. Uh, all of the, all of these data is consistent across all the regions. Uh, yeah, and so again, uh, a highlight area, I didn't mention it, but work keys. We're doing fantastic with work keys. CTE, uh, third in work keys, uh, third in ACT work keys combined. So I just wanted y'all to see this. I do want you to spend a little bit more time looking at these numbers. You've got the spreadsheet, I want you to keep that spreadsheet if you will. Uh, and just kinda, if you will, when we come back in December, if you'll look through that, see what questions you have. The good news is, I think the orange speaks for itself, that when you look at us across with the mean averages in, in our region, we are doing very well in the region. The one glaring area is graduation rate. Uh, and, uh, that's something we've got to spend a lot of time, uh, addressing, um, and looking at all factors, uh, like Dr. Brunson noted, um, but
I know it's, it, 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 it doesn't, in my brain, it doesn't make sense to penalize this for somebody that's moved out of the country. But is there any way for you to give us those numbers that, that you can say, if these children, if we could find these children, our number would be six instead of last? Or fourth instead of last? Could, could you find? So e- even though, even though it, we get the blame for it, or we get penalized for it, could you tell us what it would be if we didn't have those children that were gone out of the country, what our number would look like? If we can't find them, you know, it shouldn't be held against us, but it is. So could you find out what that number would be and what our ranking would be without them?
Possibly. What I would also caution, and I know that I mentioned this, if they move to California and we don't have access, I mean, it could be anywhere. It could be Oregon. I, I mean, I mean, once these kids move out of state and there's no paperwork to follow up where they went to, you, you, that kid is a dropout. Uh, now there, there is, when I was the accountability director, there were, there were some compacts that have been signed since I've been the accountability director. So there, you do have, the majority of the states are reporting this information to a what am I looking, what's the word I'm looking?
Centralized database or something?
A clearinghouse, let's call it a clearinghouse. But not all states are a part of that compact or that clearinghouse. So if they move to those states that are not, and you lose, you lose access to those kids, they count against you. So it's just not kids that move out of country. It could be any kid. Um, and so that's, that's, and so, but I would also argue, not, not arguing, but what I would also say is, some experts have said that these districts look like us. So, and one of the factors was EL students. So these schools are dealing with similar numbers than us.
Supposedly similar everything.
Yeah.
And yet they found out a way to
Correct. So, 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 yeah, I mean, so it's, that is a glare, like when, when I was doing this last night, I almost got sick. Uh, I mean, I was real happy when I saw the math. And I know we're doing great in math, I really do, I knew that. I, I knew we were gonna be in top three or four. Uh, I was surprised we were second. Um, but, um, I, I was really upset when, when I saw graduation.
So my question is, with us being, we're, we're a small district and I realize that we're, these are similar districts on the, on the paper. When we've talked, when we used to talk about this in the past, when we had this, um, previ- this dropout prevention coordinator, whatever it was, we had a number. I'd like to know that number, not necessarily the number that went out of the country, the number of students that we're talking about. This could be six kids, this could be ten, yeah. So that's what I would like to know. How many students, um, that, that are not graduating that's causing us to be last? I mean, and if it's ten, if it's twenty, then you kinda, we really, that can give us an idea of, um, is, like you asked, is it worth it to go back to this? Um, because it did work, it did work. So, um, yes, will you give us that number? And the other thing I would like to ask, if we're gonna revisit this in December, can you scan this and get, put this in diligent somebody for us? So, okay, this, this sheet, not the, um, click-on thing, okay? Yeah, so when we come back to it in December, we'll have it in front of us at that time.
Man, it's indiligent. Uh, that's what John's got pulled up right here. Uh, and the number is sort, yeah, I can get you the number, but the nu- the number is sorta easy to figure out. Here's why. Let's just say that every graduating class is two hundred. Let's just say that, because it's gonna be close to two hundred. All right? Eighty percent would be forty kids. It's a lot, it's a lot more kids than you think.
Uh, that's fine, whatever the number is, however you calculate it, whatever it is that's getting us here, I just want the number. I don't need the method, I would just like the number.
So when you're seventy-seven percent, now you're looking at probably forty-four kids out of every. So if two hundred is your graduating class, you've lost forty-four of those two hundred.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So it's, it's, it's a lot of kids. I will tell you, because you know, I know the data pretty good. It's not significantly different. The last ten years in Clinton City Schools history, you're gonna see similar numbers to that seventy-seven.
Ten years?
Ten years. Fifteen years. Because remember, I've been superintendent for eight.
Mm-hmm, and I've been on, I've been in this city for sixteen.
And I did a five-year study, so now you're talking thirteen. The nu- the highest number I ever saw was maybe eighty. We were seventy-seven-five last year, seventy-eight the year before, seventy-six-three, I think, the year before. So it's been ve- very, very, very consistent over time. Seventy-seven. Seventy-seven-five the year before. Um, but I will get you the number and I'll get you the number for the last, I'll give it to you for the last fifteen, if that's what you want.
The number of kids?
Yeah. Yeah, but I, I'll, I'll also get you the graduation rates for the last fifteen years. Um, because it's, it's the same data.
The last person that was in it? I remember Louis being in, right, but didn't Henry go in it after Louis?
Yes.
Henry went in after Louis.
It would have had to be seventeen, eighteen year or before. Because I came at eighteen, nineteen. No. More than eight years. Seventeen, eighteen or before. Like, but they were still, we were still doing gradu- I mean, we've been doing graduation and it's, and the metric has not changed. It's been the same metric ever since. And let me share this, because again, I used to do this for a living, I know the data. A lot of people try to argue that smaller school districts, it's harder to raise their graduation rate because of what Ms. Carol was talking about. One or two kids can just tank you. For years, they're not anymore, they're really still highly, uh, high up there. For years, Jones County was number one in graduation rate. For years, eight, nine, ten years in a row. So I would argue, because it's a small, small district, that you have more individual touch of kids and that you should have more individual conversations with kids. And thereby you have more, uh, ability to keep them in school. Um, so but, so, so, but, but, but for years, Jones County was number one, for years. Now, Jones County's, their graduating class is probably sixty. Uh, I, I mean, not two hundred. Um, you know, so Panico's probably lower than that. I, I, I mean, so Elkin City's real low, but, you know, I just wanted you to, you to see that information and y'all can tell I'm, I'm passionate about this stuff. Um, we'll move forward, uh, to number fifteen, thirteen, John. Uh, I put the letter in here, uh, but, um, East Carolina has invited myself and several superintendents to take part in the distinguished educational leader, uh, the, uh, it's called the East Carolina University College of Education International Learning Exchange. Uh, it is based on the community-focused schools model and, and we'll be, uh, touring Wales, United Kingdom. At first I told them no. Uh, and then, uh, several superintendents talked with me about it. Uh, and then I had Matt Militello, who is the professor that's heading this up, he called me personally and said, I think you're missing the point. He said, I was told why you didn't want to go. And he said, I think you're missing the point of what we're looking at. He said, we're looking at the community-focused schools model. So Dr. King has a school, his Lakewood, he has a school at Lakewood High School, is, is utilizing the community-focused school model. So, um, with the board's pseudo-permission, uh, we'll u- u- utilize that. I'm gonna be attending, uh, this, uh, learning exchange in Wales, United Kingdom on one of those two weeks, we don't know yet when it is, February twenty-first through twenty-eighth or February twenty-eighth through March se- seventh. It won't cost you a dime, ECU endowment funds are paying for all of it. But I just wanted to let you know that I'll be attending that to study, uh, every school in Wales is currently using the community-focused schools model. And so we'll be learning more about that during that trip. You've got the le- you got the letter on the next page, Mr. Low, that talks all about it. Uh, and if you have questions, you can let me know either now or at a different time.
Are you willing to share with us why you were opposed, just adamantly opposed to attending it originally?
I will share that with you privately.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I will tell you it has to do with demo- demographics.
Okay.
Think of Wales, United Kingdom. Think of our demographics. So that was why I was adamantly opposed. But then when, when, when several superintendents talked to me about it, uh, including Steve Lassiter, Otis Smallwood, who both looked like many of the students in our buildings, they said, you're missing the point, Wesley. This community schools model has been successfully implemented in many, many low-performing districts, uh, di- districts with your demographic areas, demographic numbers, I think you should attend. And then Matt called me, Matt is Latino, Matt Militello, and he said, I was told why you didn't want to go. He said, you're missing the point. And, uh, so they've kinda sway- persuaded me to go. And, uh, again, with your permission, I'll be attending.
What, give Cliff Notes version very briefly of what it does differently that raises a low-performing district. Not a hour's speech, but
So it kinda goes to what, uh, Dr. Brunson was talking about. In a community-focused schools model, you take somebody from the community, somebody that doesn't have to be educationally trained. And they become so, a position sort of like, we've talked about before, like dean of students. They have ties to the community, and we have a lot of community people in our schools already. But they just have a, they just have a community focus. They go out and they search for businesses, they go out and they search for, um, people that are willing to come in and be, well, like we've been trying to start our mentor program. They're just like community-focused people that are not necessarily educationally trained, but they come in to the district and there's big, there's lots of grant monies in the community school base. So basically, if you get one of those grants, you're not, you're not searching for the money to pay for this dropout prevention coordinator or this community schools person. You got it. And so that's why Steve Lassiter from Pitt, Otis Smallwood from BRT, they're like, you need to attend.
Well, when, when you read this, it talks about, um, the person that you're talking about, but it, it, it emphasis, it puts a lot of emphasis on building the family. And, and, um, you know, because we talk about how sometimes the parents cannot even help the students because they don't even know. But this talks about the family engagement piece and how they're, they're giving skills and stuff to the parents and the families to help build them up and get them ready to be able to be more supportive for the, the children. Um, this is what I'm looking at here on this, uh, link that you gave us about the family, the focus of this thing.
You can see there are family engagement, community engagement, multi-agency engagement. Um, you know, there's, so, but I, I put the link to the article in there for, for you. That's actually from, that's what they're doing in Wales. So that, that article is not necessarily about community-focused schools. That's community-focused schools that they're actually running in Wales, United Kingdom. Um, there are lots of different aspects of, 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 um, community schools. Maybe when Jamie comes, uh, on, uh, December the eighth to present to Brad, we can have him do a little presentation on community schools and what he's doing at Lakewood. This year, first year. Yeah. Um, he, he they have, they have a coordinator, have a person. Um, and so I think it would be good to see the perspective that maybe that Jamie could offer. Um, he and I have not really talked about community-based schools a lot. Um, but, um, he was one of the ones, he's going as well. Um, but he wa- he was one of the ones that pushed me, I really, again, when Lassiter sat me down and when Smallwood sat me down, and then when I got a call from Militello, um, I was convinced that I needed to attend. Um, but Jamie can definitely give us the perspective of what community-based schools looks like in North Carolina and what it looks like at Lakewood High School. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. And then he can also share with us, uh, the inroads of how to, you know, get that grant. You know, because, because, you know, he was able to acquire it. Uh, number sixteen, Mr. Low. Uh, just wanted to let you know that draft working condition survey is now live and my principals have received the survey, I hope. Uh, not only the principals, but our assistant principals and our principal interns. Uh, that is, um, um, think the North Carolina Teaching Working Condition Survey. This is the Principal's Working Condition Survey. So we were one of ten selected districts that were, uh, selected to participate. Those other districts are Beaufort, Caldwell, Cleveland, Franklin, Martin, New Hanover, Sampson, Stokes and Swain. And I was one of three superintendents that were selected to serve on the team to create that. Uh, so because I was a team member, they said, your district has to do it. Uh, and then we also, uh, myself, uh, well, one of the superintendents has retired, uh, superintendent from Cumberland retired, so then when he retired, I took his place. Um, and, um, then we started talking with our superintendent friends and that's how we came up with the ten, uh, districts that were gonna be participating. But what I'm excited about, and y'all know, uh, as my dad would say, greenbacks, uh, we, we get three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to participate, uh, in this survey. Uh, but it will also help us to get, um, uh, information and resources from our principals and our assistant principals and our admin interns to know what my staff and I are doing well, but also what we need to do a little differently. Uh, and so I'm very excited about that. They have until November the fifteenth to complete that survey and then we'll receive that, uh, that data. And we are a draft of what might move forward next year to all hundred and fifteen districts. So super excited about that. It's been a lot of work, uh, but I'm excited about, uh, where we're coming from. I was just excited that they asked me, because the two other ones that were serving on the committee were the previous two North Carolina superintendents of the year. Uh, and then when one, uh, when one retired, they asked me, I was like, "Okay." Uh, but, uh, it's going well. Uh, insurance options, just wanted to let you, because again, I always want you to hear it from me. Insurance options in school business, we often refer to this as the cafeteria benefits plan. Not because it's just for cafeteria or, or child nutrition employees, but because our employees have options to choose and to select from various different, um, plates, we'll call it. Those things include things like dental, vision, flexible spending, medical bridge. And so to harness, uh, the collective buying power, uh, Clinton City Schools and Sampson County Schools came together to write a RFP. Uh, and so we sent that out, you've got that available if you want to look at it. We did receive four proposals, this is kinda like all happening like kinda right now. One of the proposals, we decided this week to throw out because it did not address the needs of the RFP, uh, didn't meet the qualifications, we'll say. And so we now have three remaining vendors, uh, and they're the three biggest ones in North Carolina. Really southeast, uh, southeast United States. First Financial, Mark III, and Pierce Group. Currently, we're, we're, we are with Pierce Group. One of these other two was a finalist the la, the last time we did it. Uh, and we will have a recommendation and share that at the December 8th Board of Education meeting. It will be one of these three. Uh, we have a meeting on November the 4th. We'll include classified, certified administrative district staff, uh, to hear the presentations, and then they will select either First Financial, Mark III, or Pierce Group, uh, and we'll push that forward at our December 8th Board meeting.
Dr. Johnson, would we have to agree? Would we, would both schools districts have to choose the same one?
They do not, they do not, but you will lose your collective buying power. I mean, you're, you're still gonna get that rate, but, you know, that rate could change after the three years or however, I think we wrote it for three years. Um, but, um, we're hoping that we're gonna be able to agree so that we have, you know, again, instead of 430 employees, that we've got 1,500 or 1,800, or how many ever it is.
So the, the presentations that they submitted was based on the numbers with both schools? So once you sit down and, and, uh, with the group that you talked about and make a selection, that selection is based on us, both districts coming together? So if we choose one and Sampson County chooses one, then the rates that, you know, the one, the rates that, um, the decision was made on won't be valid. So what, then what? The districts need to get together.
Oh, 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 we are together. Uh, yeah, so, so, so we've already had multiple meetings with Sampson County Schools, uh, about this. Um, we, we met and threw out that one proposal. We've got a plan for how that November 4th meeting's gonna go. Uh, we know what we're gonna do, uh, with our staff. Uh, and then they're gonna have the vote, and then ultimately, we'll have to look at those votes to see how they go. And then, um, then we'll have to, you know, look at the RFP and the, um, what's that thing called, John, that you scored a RFP with?
Rubric.
The rubric, uh, to determine kinda where it falls.
So the meeting that you're speaking of is just with our district? They'll have a separate meeting or all, or we all meeting together?
All together.
Oh, that's good, that's what, perfect.
All together. Uh, we've, like I said, uh, it's been me, it's been Emily, Sheila, and myself, and then tho, tho, those same roles in Sampson County Schools, uh, have, have been meeting, uh, about this. And, and since we have the same attorney, she wrote the RFP. I mean, there, there's a lot of reasons why we decided to do this together. Right. Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. Again, just trying to save our staff a little bit of money. It may only be $10 a month, but if it's $10 a month in vision, $10 a month in dental, I mean, it, yeah, it adds up, yes ma'am, I like that thought. Um, YMCA partnership, 24, John. Um, September 29th through October the 31st is the timeline for our, uh, second grade, um, swim initiative. That timeline may have to be extended because we were not able to go this week because of Thursday and Friday being workdays. So we had to extend it another week. So that's our, uh, partnership there with the YMCA and all of our second graders getting the Safety Around Water program. If you would like to go see that, reach out to, uh, Dr. Newkirk, please, and she can let you know the exact times that we're at the Y, and you can go, uh, see our, uh, our second graders participating in that safety around. They're there the whole week, so like Clark's, Clark's class would go with, we got two classes that go a day. So like Clark's class and Linda's class would go this whole week. And they, they spend one hour each, uh, at the pool, uh, learning about safety around water. Um, so I was, I'm just so, so, we started that program last year, and I'm so excited about it. Um, the 26, 27 calendar, of course, you've already, well, we're in 25, 26, but I'm gonna be presenting the 26, 27 calendar to all of our groups, uh, next Tuesday. What I mean, all of our groups, I won't, I won't present it to, I may mention it to the students. But we have our student advisory group, we have our classified advisory board, we have our teacher advisory group, and we have our parents, uh, our PAC, a parent advisory council, all next Tuesday. So next Tuesday, just know, if y'all call me and I don't answer, just know, because I got like four big meetings. But I'm gonna be talking with that, that team, those teams about the 26, 27 calendar. We already kinda have already done this, but, uh, we were worried about that Senate bill that didn't, that didn't pass. Uh, so we're gonna move forward with the 26, 27 calendar, and we'll present that also at the December Board meeting. Um, wanted to let you know that Dark Horse Ring of Honor, uh, that we are moving forward with another meeting on Tuesday, October the 21st, just to talk about new, any new submissions, next steps. Uh, so that's a meeting, uh, that we'll be participating in. Uh, not that you need to know it, but I threw the conference constitution in, if you kinda wanted to know how our conference is constructed, tiebreaker rules, all that stuff, I put that in the conference constitution.
Dr. Johnson, excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
The Ring of Fire submissions, is that a rolling, they can submit it at any time? Or is it a, they're a cutoff time to submit those names for Ring of Honor?
We had a cutoff time initially, uh, and it was in September, then, uh, September 24. Then we extended it to January 1, uh, but there's been lots of talk about additional names that weren't submitted. And so that's what we're gonna kinda do on October 21st, is just kinda rekindle the discussion. Most likely, we're gonna set another deadline, uh, so that other names can come in, and then we'll consider those, um, you know, for the, the naming to the first, uh, Ring of Honor, you know, plats. Um, we only had four last time, and we just felt like there were so many additional names that weren't considered. And so, uh, we kinda paused it, uh, but there has been, um, some, some, some discussion has been rekindled, and there's some additional names that have been discussed. And so we're, we're, we're hopeful that there's gonna be more names, uh, when we set the new deadline this time. I thought about the conference constitution, I updated all the records. You've got all the records in there, uh, currently for middle school, high school. Look at all those, let me know, uh, if you have questions. Uh, women's tennis just finished their season, they did make it to the second round, but they lost last night by one, um, one match. They lost 6 to 5 to Washington. So, um, volleyball's getting ready to start. Uh, we've got a home conference, a home, uh, playoff game on Saturday at 1 o'clock against Roanoke Rapids. Uh, so if you'd like to come and see that, bunch of information about athletics there, just look at it. And then I put a bunch of dates for you, um, and, uh, on the last page there. What questions do you have?
Hello? Any questions? No questions, you're done? Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and congratulations to all the honorees that he talked about early on in his, um, presentation. All right, next section is Board of Education. Um, there's one thing, uh, about our next meeting is actually gonna be here, December 8th at 5:30 here, because we have four schools that are presenting their, um, school improvement plan, and if they bring as many as Dr. Johnson, I mean, Dr. Faison brought, we'll have to go to the high school auditorium or something to get it done. Oh, yes, you did. But anyway, it's gonna be here, uh, December 8th at 5:30 PM. Um, how about the items? Ms. Peace and Mike can help with this. We had to do that conflict of interest professional development, I did mine. Um, it's required, it has to be done by December 31st. So if you haven't had the chance to do that, go to the NCSBA and, and get that done. Um, just one, for the record, hopefully Anthony is listening carefully. We, we, the Clinton City Schools Board of Education nominated, um, Ms. Worley for the, um, Raleigh Dingman Awards. Um, uh, last, well, between last meeting and now, we submitted that. We also nominated the Sampson County Commissioners for the Commissioners of the Year Award. We're hoping we'll hear, uh, great news in a couple of weeks about those, uh, those winners. Um, we also, the, the ceremony for those winners on Wednesday, November 12th, at 4 o'clock at the NCSBA conference, if you're interested, I'll kinda keep you informed. We also have K-5 students who entered into the art contest for the NCSBA, and both Sampson Middle School and Clinton High School submitted videos for the video contest. So we're well-represented in those, um, competitions this year for the NCSBA. Well, certainly Clinton City Schools is gonna be a winner, right? Because we, we have so many, um, nominations in the pot. Um, any other questions or comments from you guys?
I don't have a question, but I probably should let you know that I've been talking to Ramona about, um, our band. You know, we always have the, the, every other school is represented, and sometimes there's been repeaters. You pointed out that there's been repeaters. Yeah, I wasn't gonna call them out, but, but yeah, so I have been talking to Ramona about what, you know, what does it take for us to get our band to be able to come and perform at one of the, um, luncheons? Yeah. There's a long list, I'm just trying to be persuasive, yeah, you get on the list, well, as I, as we say, some of those have been on there before, we haven't ever been, so we're, we're working on it.
Any other, thank you, Ms. Worley, any other comments or thoughts? Ms. Hayes, you think of anything that we left out? Ms. Hayes said, "Let's go on." All right. Um, if nothing else claims our attention, I need a motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Motion made by Pastor Seg about Mr. Ed, all in favor, let it be known by the word I. I, what do I think, Dark Horse Fellas Challenge?
Where are we on it, what's the update?
The updated community numbers as of this afternoon was 57. We're still hovering just under 20% with staff.
All right, so you guys, I said you guys are, text yesterday?
November 1.
Guys? I don't care what you do, just get, get me 20 names of people, okay? All right? Yeah, well, yeah. You got...